Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight on our May 20th City Council meeting. We had quite an evening so far. We officially opened our food truck plaza, so that will be here every Tuesday, I believe, every Tuesday evening throughout the rest of the summer. We also had school photos, that's why some of us are dressed a little nicer than normal. And we also just had a workshop discussion with our cemetery rules and regulations. So, we're glad you've joined us here today. We've got quite the audience. We have some first responders in the audience. Thank you for coming as well. Let's start, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance if you'll stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Rory, will you see who is here and who is not here?
Yes, Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Michelash?
Here.
Eric Brown?
Here.
Billings?
Here.
And Glover?
Here.
Okay, that's all of us. We are all present. First up, we have a Unified Police Department report, and to give that is our very own Chief, April Morse. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, and good evening, Council. I'll keep it brief because I know we have a packed room and a lot on the agenda, but just for the month of April with Unified Police Department, we responded on 2,381 calls, which resulted in 814 cases that were reported and being worked. It was an average of 85 calls per officer. The traffic citations, which we saw a dip in those numbers during our mandatory constant manning and with our staffing shortages, they're starting to come up. So, for the month of April, there were 440 citations that were issued. Now, we have two motor officers that have just completed motor school, so that will, the end of that will be tomorrow, so we're excited to get them out. They will be our traffic enforcement, so it will be good to have them out on the streets dealing with the traffic complaints. We also had some fun things that occurred. We had our Cops and Kids Art Contest. We had two winners from Hillcrest High School, and hopefully those pictures of their art was part of your pack that you got to see their submissions. Awesome. So, they were pretty impressive and wonderful kids. And then the last thing I'll talk about, this month, we received notices for three retiring out of Midvale. So, as soon as we start getting right with our numbers of staffing, then we have hits like this. So, we're excited for them. They're all people that served 20-plus years, and they've just made those decisions personally to move on. So, two of them will exit in June and one the first part of July, so we will definitely miss those folks. So, that's my report unless you guys have any questions.
Any questions for the Chief? Thank you, Chief.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have public comments. Anyone, any person wishing to comment on an item not otherwise scheduled for a public hearing on the agenda may address the City Council at this point by stepping up to the microphone. You'll have three minutes. Just as a reminder, if you're here for any of the public hearings that we have tonight, you will be given an opportunity to speak at that time. So, any other public comments, we will entertain them now. Going once, twice, sold. Okay. Moving on to Council reports. First up, as always, Councilmember Bonnie Billings.
Thank you. I just wanted to, again, express how excited I am about our food truck plaza and invite everybody to come on Tuesdays and join us for that community engagement.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Paul Glover.
I echo the food court. It's very nice. I appreciated it, and that's all I have this evening.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Heidi Robinson.
I too wanted to say, come check out the food court and maybe pop in and say hello to your council members and mayor. And then, I did want to remind everyone, since we're in such a community spirit, that we are going to be doing our Harvest Days Festival, so that will be July 28th through August 2nd culminating in the parade and all the events at the park. So, put it on your calendars and come down and have a good time, especially the bingo. The Harvest Days Committee's got some great prizes this year, so I highly recommend everyone check it out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Bryant Brown.
Just want to echo same sentiments about the food truck plaza. It's great. We just want to make sure residents know about it. It's every Tuesday for the summer, right? Do we have like an end date already, or is it kind of open-ended? I don't know.
Yeah, it goes right until at the end of the summer when school starts up, and that's kind of when we usually do the end.
So, you know, tell your neighbors, tell your friends. It's, you know, only be as successful as, you know, people that come and use it. It's a great look. If you haven't seen it coming in, make sure you walk by on your way out. That's all.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Denise Michelash.
I really didn't care for the food court. No, I think it's fabulous, especially walking distance from where I'm at, so I'm excited to be up here on Tuesdays and enjoy that and happy you've made the investment on it. Also wanted to say that the Community Council is meeting this week, so if you're interested to join that. And I also volunteer for the Harvest Festival, so if you want to come and volunteer, you can do that too. So, thank you.
A two-for-one deal. Thank you. For my report, some quick hits here. I know we have a long meeting. On Saturday, I did a ribbon cutting at Daiso, the new, I don't know how to describe it, but it is an experience that you need to see for yourself. I've never done a ribbon cutting where there were so many people waiting in line. We estimated about 500 people waiting in line. Yeah, probably more than that. I stopped counting at 2:50, and then I just doubled it because the line was at least double. So, very unofficial counting, but that's a really, really cool store. It's in shops at Fort Union's, in between Michael's and Five Below, so recommend checking it out. It is an experience. There's a fishing section for any of those of you who fish and want to get those items at a cheaper price. Last Friday, I was one of the judges at the Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year Contest, so that was pressure. That was a lot of pressure. But, so it was, all of the Boys and Girls Clubs across the valley had a girl who was nominated, and even though our Midvale Club did not win that award, it was certainly a pretty cool event to get to attend. I also wanted to mention our UPD budget. I can't see Chief Morse in the back, but I just want to give a shout out to Chief Morse. She has done an amazing job keeping the budget what we were all comfortable with up here at the dais, and she has found some cost savings that went above and beyond. So, appreciate that. If you want to, so the budget increase is hovering right at that 3.8%, which, you know, is much better than the 14% increase from last year. So, we appreciate all your efforts and all the efforts of UPD. Last thing, well, second to last thing, I too want to say that the food truck plaza, I disagree with Councilmember Michelash. It's beautiful. It's a wonderful community amenity, and we're looking forward to years of using that facility. But I did want to mention, a really cool thing happened recently. I mentioned this briefly, maybe two months ago, but we had a resident whose sewer line broke, and that is a costly repair, a lot costlier than I thought. She was looking at about $10,000 to $12,000 to replace the sewer line from the street to her house. And she told me, and she told me I could share this info. She lives on a very fixed income, less than $1,000 a month, so there's no way that she had $10,000 to fix the sewer line. So, we here on the City Council, we have approved a program through Neighbor Works, which helps folks with these very unexpected and very costly home repairs. And very happy to say, after quite, you know, it took a couple of weeks to get in touch with the proper people and get everything approved, but she was approved for the entire cost of the sewer repair. So, you know, that's a decision that we made on the council that has positively impacted someone's life. She was, there was no way she was going to be able to keep her home. She was, the two options she had was to fix the sewer line or sell her house. And because of that program that we put in place, that helped her stay in her home. And that's one of those humbling moments as an elected official where you see programs that, you know, we thought were a great idea on paper. Not only are they a great idea on paper, they are a great idea in practice as well. So, I wanted to just pass that along to the council and to those here today, that, one, that program exists. So, if you have or know anyone who's experiencing a similar financial crisis like that due to home improvement costs, please reach out to your council member, the mayor, or you can look at the Neighbor Works program yourself. So, sorry, I didn't plan to speak that long on that one, but I'm very, very happy for her and the fact that we were able to keep her in her home. That's... Okay, that's it for my report. Next up, we have City Manager Matt Dahl.
And the first thing I'm going to do is turn it over to Nate to talk about the Mural Festival.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I just wanted to give a quick update on the Mural Festival. We will have one council meeting before that, but I wanted to make sure that it's on everybody's radar and that we get as many people coming as possible. So, the Mural Festival, this will be our fourth annual festival, Saturday, June 7th, from 4 to 9. This year, we'll have seven artists on the street doing different murals. We have a few local Utah artists, some across the country, and then several international artists that will be here. And just a heads up on that, there's a couple of them because of schedules and because of different festivals that they have to do around the country. You'll actually see them out on the street starting this week, starting to do some of those murals. All of the artists will be back for the festival to be able to engage with the public and everybody that comes. But as always, we'll have food trucks that will be here at the food truck plaza. We'll have a beer garden that will be run by Two Row Brewery, which is a local brewery. That'll be right here on the other side of the plaza. They'll have a lot of games and different things like that, and the beer garden is, obviously, it's 21 and up, but it's actually, everybody can get into it, so it doesn't, it's not exclusive in who can get in and play the games and things like that. The Arts Council is participating, and they'll be doing some chalk art with different artists on some sidewalk chalk, some squares. Quite a lot of artists that they'll have come in. There'll be a lot of vendors on Main Street. The Main Street will be closed down for the entirety of that event. And this year, you know, the reason why we'd like to do these events on Main Street is really to get the businesses involved and make people aware of what's happening on Main Street. And this year, we're really excited because a lot of the businesses that are on Main Street that have either opened up recently or have been there for a while are participating either through having vendor booths or other activities. So, some good participation from the businesses. Just keep a heads up, the mayor will be doing an arts walk where we'll walk around the street with anyone from the community that wants to show up and go around and meet the artists and talk about the new murals and then talk about all the old murals that we have there. We're getting really close to our goal now of having 50 murals on the Main Street area. I think we might end up one mural short of that, but that just gives us something to aim for for next year. Craft Lake City will be participating. In the week before, they'll be doing a workshop on how to create your own home murals for walls and things like that. So, looking forward to them doing that. There'll be street musicians there, plenty of parking. We always have extra parking at the Overstock Parking Facility, which can hold as many people as can come. That's only about a two-block walk to City Hall here. And, you know, there's a lot, the staff puts a lot of time into putting this together and to highlight Main Street. From a staff perspective, as many people as can come is what we want. So, we would love to have a thing where we said, wow, there were so many people that it was a little bit overwhelming. That's our goal. So, don't worry about how crowded it is. Invite everybody. Let me see if I missed anything. There are, like I said, we're close to 50 murals. There are a couple of murals that were from the past that we'll be covering over. So, that's something that has always been planned, is that as we keep doing the Mural Festival, sometimes some of those murals that have been up for three or four or five years will get a new mural so that we always have the Main Street looking like an active gallery. And that's really what we want, so that you see new things when you come. So, although this isn't being covered over, but the alleyway that's down in between Center and First, we'll be getting a new mural. That had a mural before that got painted over black. Now, we're going to get a new mural back there, so we're excited about that one, having a mural again. And then I know this is going to be a big announcement, and I don't know how everybody's going to take it, but the owner of one of the tattoo shops there has decided to put a new mural up on the whole wall, and so the statue mural of the mermaid, this will be its last few weeks before that's covered over. So, if you want to go get your mermaid fix, go out there and stare at that for a little bit. But that is going to be one that's going to be covered over. Again, that wasn't coming from the city. That was really the owner of that business saying they felt like it was time for something new there. Anyways, those are some updates on Mural Fest. We'll do a lot to promote it, but do as much as you can. We want to see as many people there as we can.
When can we have a map of the mermaids?
They're working on that right now, so we'll have that soon, and we'll get that posted and out. We've just, we have, we always do sort of a concert poster sort of thing for every Mural Festival. We've been working on that. Those proofs are all approved, so you'll start to see those go up everywhere. Those have already been in things like Slick Magazine and City Weekly, but we'll keep putting those up. That was put together by one of our muralists that was here last year, so it's kind of neat that she was able to do another thing for us. And it has a lot of, I don't even know if you call them Easter eggs, when they're just, the entirety of the whole thing is just a bunch of different things that relate to different things that are going on on Main Street. So, it's kind of a fun piece of artwork to look at.
And Nate, since you brought it up, did you want to mention that the mural walk with the mayor is from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM on June 5th? And there is free ice cream at the end of the mural walk, but you have to go through the entire mural walk with me first, but there will be free ice cream at the end, June 5th, 6:00 PM. Did you want to mention that?
Yeah. We got to cover it.
June 5th.
At what time?
6:00 PM.
Okay, so June 5th, 6...
Meeting at City Hall.
And is there a mayor walk where ice cream's at the end? Yeah, there's a mayor walk with ice cream. And if, we did that for the first time last year. It was a really good event. I mean, it was one of my favorite things to do because we kind of got to walk around, meet the artists, but then there were a lot of people from the community that really hadn't seen Main Street a lot, so we were able to just talk a lot about the plans that we have for Main Street, what we've done so far, and what's coming. So, it's actually really kind of a cool event if you could make that work.
I'll be there.
Mayor, I have one more thing. As you're probably a little aware, we have a number of facilities, mostly in our parks, that we rent out to the public to utilize. Every year, the City Council approves the fees that are charged for those facilities as part of the fee schedule, but when that is administered, we have some flexibility in how we do that. Currently, the method has been in trying to be as accommodating as possible, is that an application is submitted, we confirm whether or not that date is available, or, sorry, someone requires and says, can I get this date? We say, yes, that date's available. They submit an application. Staff reviews the application, and in the case of some of the smaller facilities, it's not too big a deal. If it's a larger event and we're talking about the amphitheater or the pavilion or some of that kind of stuff, it might require some additional evaluating to make sure if it's something that could potentially require security that they have that. And then, once we've gone through that process, then we have charged the fee for utilizing that facility. One of the problems that we've been running into, though, is that we have people who, as the kids say, ghost us after the review is done. And so, what ends up happening is that we have been reserved, like, holding a date for folks that has prevented other people from renting it that are serious about doing it. And so, what we're looking at doing is changing the policy so that when someone submits, we've told them the date is available, they will submit the fee, and we'll take the fee, review it. If something comes up that prevents it during the review phase that says that they can't utilize the facility, then we would refund them the majority of the fee except for what we're considering the application fee during that time. And then, if we get through the review and it gets up to the point in time where their event is going to be, you know, weeks out or whatnot, and then they try to cancel, what we want to do is to say, because they're essentially taking other people's opportunity to utilize that facility in that time, is that we would not refund them, but give them a year to reschedule that event in the facility. In this way, we're hoping that, again, we get past this scenario where someone is sort of securing a date for a long period of time without actually finalizing that reservation. And so, I just wanted to inform you that that's the direction we want to go with regards to the reserving of the facility and that, just wanted to explain the issue that we're trying to resolve in case anyone has concerns about that. Does anyone have any questions about that change? That is all I have for this evening, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, City Manager. We have one action item for tonight, and that is the reason everyone's here, I think. Consider Resolution Number 2025-R30 authorizing the mayor to sign an access agreement for the use of city property with Two Row Brewing. for the use of city property with Two Row Brewing LLC. And we have Aubrey already at the podium for this.
Good evening, Councilor Mayor. Thanks for having me. Just want to touch on this access agreement for the use of the City Hall Plaza, the South for the Beer Garden, that Nate discussed previously. There was an amendment to the code last year that Kate brought about allowing alcoholic beverages to be sold in public spaces with proper licensing and whatnot. And the city initiated this by approaching Two Row. They participated in last year's Beer Garden, which was on the Second Avenue kind of plaza that we have over there by Utah Partners for Health. We wanted to use the newly activated space over here at the South Plaza for those murals this year, and it's going to be a great use of the space, kind of, you know, initiating everything there. This access agreement is required for the use of city property, especially due to insurance and whatnot with alcohol being served and games being there in the plaza. And they have met all their requirements for the single event application with both Midvale City and the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Services. So they are all set to go as long as the access agreement is good. Here's a site map. Basically, the mural's going to be situated within the Beer Garden, but as Nate had mentioned, it is family-friendly, so only 21 and up can get a wristband and drink, but everyone will be allowed to go in and experience the mural really close up, which will be really fun for everyone. There'll be plenty of seating in the yard game area, which will be new. We only had cornhole last year, so we're trying to up our game a little bit. So, yeah, with that.
Any questions for Aubrey? Thank you for the presentation. If there are no questions, there is an action item and motion on the board.
Mayor, I move that we suspend the rules and approve Resolution Number 2025-R30 authorizing the mayor to execute an access agreement for the use of city property with Two Row Brewing LLC.
Second?
Okay, there is a motion and a second. Rory, will you call the yeas and nays?
Yes, Councilmember Billings.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
And Nicolash.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Moving on, we have three public hearings for tonight. The first is a public hearing with respect to, A, the issuance of water, sewer, and storm drain revenue bonds, Series 2025, and B, the potential economic impact that the improvements facility or property to be financed with the proceeds of the Series 2025 bonds will have on the private sector. And here to discuss that, okay, Laura Lewis. Welcome, Laura. I didn't see you sneak in.
Thank you. I was a little bit worried when I got here and there were so many people. I'm like, oh my gosh, I'm late.
We're all for you, Laura.
All right. Anyway, the council met several weeks ago and passed a resolution authorizing the issuance of these water and sewer revenue bonds to upgrade your utility system. And they will be issued on parity with other water and sewer bonds the city has outstanding. I frequently get asked by constituents, as those like sitting behind me, of why do we have to go into debt? And, you know, people may or may not have that concern, but I'll give you my little spiel. Most people have to go into debt for large capital projects of their own, right? I mean, not many of us paid cash for our home. And if you try to save up cash for a home, you're always sort of chasing because the cost is going this way while you could be making the payments at a fixed interest rate. So the city is exercising its right to use debt wisely. People get really dialed up about the federal government deficit, and I have to remind people that the federal government can borrow for operating costs. Local governments cannot. You can only borrow for capital projects. So since it's probably not why everyone's in the room, but since there's a large audience, I thought I'd take my two minutes of fame to educate. So with the passing of that resolution several weeks ago, you are required under state law to hold a public hearing so that your constituency can come and express any concerns that they may have about that. And then you also will be, the resolution also authorizes the offering document that will be used to get those bonds into market. Nothing will be finalized until we go to a pricing, and at that point, then there are designated officers that can approve that. Matt and Mariah and I will be traveling to San Francisco to meet with the rating agency and bond insurer in regard to this transaction, as well as the sales and franchise fee revenue bonds that you also have coming up. Any questions?
So you didn't need the mayor to come to that event in San Francisco?
It's sometimes helpful, but it's not required.
I won't take it personally. I know you guys will do a great job. So this is a public hearing. I will entertain a motion from the council to open it to public comment if there are any public comments.
Our motion, we open public hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor of opening public comment, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, we are in public comment. If anyone wishes to comment about the bonds, please step up to the microphone. You'll be given three minutes. Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to close public comment.
Our motion, we close public comment.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor of closing public comment, say aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed?
Mayor, I do have one question.
Yeah.
Please. I always like the public to know what revenue source we're going to use for these bonds. Could you, Laura, explain that?
Absolutely. Again, frequently, people hear bonds, the local government bonds, and they assume that you're pledging your property taxes. In order to pledge your property taxes, the city has to go to a general obligation vote, which it did a year and a half or so ago for a rec center project. But for your water and sewer bonds, the only thing that the bondholders have access to is your water and sewer revenues. So the kind of covenants that the city makes is that it will maintain the system in good working order so that you can actually charge revenues, that you will keep those rates at a certain point so that you have enough revenue to pay the debt. And if you were to default, what happens is a trustee is appointed, and that trustee comes in and says, well, we think you need to raise rates or lower expenses, but all they have access to are the water and sewer revenues for this particular bond issue.
And one other question, how long is the bonding for? Do we have that?
I should, but I'm kind of in deal mail. I've got lots of transactions, I believe, but I will look while the rest of your meeting goes on. I believe it's 25 years.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Laura or for staff?
In a sec, 35 years.
35?
Okay.
That's a maximum?
Right.
But we will likely make it shorter than that.
In the memo, we have the terms from the parameters resolution, and that's got what the maximum interest rate would be in order for us to sell it, the maximum length of the bond, and the, the bonds cannot be sold at less than 96% of the total principal. So that's setting up those parameters. And then, as Laura said, our goal would be to try to improve on all of those significantly.
So these, we're voting today on the parameters that allows us to go out to seek better final numbers, and then Laura will be back. She is back already.
Yes, sorry. You've already approved the parameters. That sets in motion the need to hold a public hearing. You're also approving the substantially final draft of the offering document.
Thank you for that. So if there are no other questions or comments from the council, this is a public hearing. Action item is, the action resolution is in your packet. And if no one wants to make that motion, it just...
Mayor, I move a document, Resolution 2025-R28 authorizing a preliminary official statement and an official statement required in connection with the issuance and sale of not more than 18 million 500,000 aggregate principal amount of water, sewer, and storm drain revenue bonds, Series 2025, and other documents required in connection therewith, authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary for the consummation of the transaction contemplated by the resolution and related matters.
Second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. Rory, will you call the yeas and nays?
Yes, Councilmember Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
Nicolash.
Yes.
And Billings.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Laura, as always. Public hearing number two. So we have a public hearing to consider a zone map amendment to add the regional commercial residential overlay zone to a property located at 7,001 South 900 East. Information regarding the proposed regulations, prohibitions, and permitted uses the property will be subject to, if the rezone is adopted, can be found in Midvale City Code 17-7-12.1. I'm here to discuss is Vendeline. Guten Tag, Vendeline Begates.
Guten Tag, gut. Thank you, Mayor. Maybe as a reminder, this already went through planning commission and city council once before, right around a year ago, I mean, just about to the day. This time, we're looking at a new application with a new concept plan. And as a reminder, here's the property. It's located north of Fort Union Boulevard, not very far away. It runs onto 900 East. 900 East is a state highway. It traverses almost the entire valley, and then in the south turns west. And it's a very busy state road. Otherwise, what we have in the location here is commercial neighbors to the south. The closest one is Wendy's. The other buildings you see are predominantly restaurants. Then we have the Essex Court condominiums to the east. It's a very nice residential project, and it's located in the AM 25 zone. And then an office building to the north. And this is the Office of Sovereign Financial. This is a picture from 2019. At that time, there was an office development on this property. And you can see it had a lot of surface parking. It was basically a product office time. Then 2021, the apartment burned down, and then was subsequently fully removed. It was a total loss. And that's really why we are here. The owner would like to have productive use on this parcel again. And as the city, one component of the analysis of something like this is the general plan. Here's a map that comes out of the general plan. And the general plan shows basically two categories within the city. Stability areas and opportunity areas. And this is very close to the Fort Union opportunity area. You can see how the plan has these jagged lines around each area. The plan is a few years old, but not so old that there wasn't the capability to show clear lines that follow property lines. And that really wasn't the intent here. General plans are advisory documents. And as advisory documents, in which is the case here in Utah and in Mitchee, the general plan tries to give you your policy and background and data to base future decisions on. And in this Fort Union opportunity area, there are several goals. And they are listed here. This is a direct quote from the general plan. Diversification and increase of density of the land use mix. Then redevelopment, which is a major part in this application really, since the property is really vacant right now. And at the same time, it's in a very good location. Major transportation arteries and also commercial uses that are in the immediate vicinity. When we get to the concept, you'll see that some of these items that the general plan shows as goals are already shown in the concept. You see the mix of uses. You also see structured parking. And that's a stark difference between this concept and what used to be there. Retail uses that proposes retail uses on the first floor. Then in order to round out the picture, this is a depiction of the zoning map. You can see that the parcel in question here, that's applying, is surrounded on the east with the residential zone, the medium to high density residential, which the Essex Court condominium, condominiums are located. Then to the north, it's the regional commercial to the south, regional commercial. And then on the other side of 900 East, you have a mix residential and regional commercial. With regard to the structure of how the city looks at proposed zoning amendments, we have in ordinance the details that gives us these four criteria to judge the application against. First, does it promote the objectives of the general plan? And it does. It takes off several of the recommendations in the general plan. The second criterion was this, was the existing zone a result of a clerical error or a mistake of fact? That doesn't apply in this case. The zone wasn't there in error. Then has this land, what's environment changed? Or has it changed to such a degree that it's in the public interest to encourage redevelopment? And that's a resounding yes in this case. Due to the fire, redevelopment is very desirable. It's in everyone's interest. Vakant pieces of land oftentimes come with nuisances. And of course, it's also not good for the city to, number one, have this type of a view from a major artery that traverses the entire Salt Lake Valley. And of course, there's also tax revenue involved here. And then that's this promote purposes outlined in Utah Code 101A12. That section in the Utah Code is basically the enabling legislation for zone changes. And it has a long list of purposes. And some of them being items like the general welfare, economy, and so on and so on. And due to this piece of land not being in productive use, it's really not good for anyone. So to me, this is also a yes. In this particular case, the city code has an additional set of criteria that come with the regional commercial residential overlay for which the applicant is applying. And if you, once you look at these for a minute, you can see a pattern. There are basically two groups. The first group, criterion one, three, and four, really addresses economic development. And then the remainder addresses the urban environment, the quality of it. development. And then the remainder addresses the urban environment, the quality of it, and with that, walkability and pedestrian connections. And when we look at the concept, I think it becomes clear that the concept we need tries to incorporate these things. So this is the view from the east. You can see the fountains on nine hundred east and how the building is broken up. Yes, it's, that's correct. It's from the west looking east. So you're on the western side of nine hundred east. And what you see here is the building is broken up. It's not very tall compared to what this zone allows that the applicant is asking for, or compared to what the current zone this is in would allow.
What is the height for the current zone? Not the asked for the rezone, but if they built whatever the allowed upon max height, what, what could it be?
So the, the RC zone allows up to seventy-five feet. The, the overlay, the RCO goes up to eighty-five and then has, the language in the code says it's to the top of the floor plate of the uppermost stories. So there could be a little more than that.
Twenty feet, or roughly twenty feet less than if they didn't do the residential rezone, if they built whatever is allowed there now?
Yeah. So, I mean, so this, I mean, what we can see in the concept that the applicant provided is that they're really not trying to maximize this project. So you see that in the height, you also see that in the density. The density in the regional commercial residential overlay is eighty-five units an acre. This here is approximately fifty-nine units an acre. So the, the number that the applicant is currently looking at, of course, this is a concept that can, you know, still move just a little bit. It's, I think it was a hundred and forty units. If they maxed it out, you are just north of two hundred. So here, just other views of the concept. This is basically the backside, we're looking from the north. And you can see how the two portions of the building interact and how the shorter portion of the building was placed towards the residential neighbors in order to lessen the impact of this new development. You can also see there's a buffer, that's landscape with trees, Essex Court itself also has mature trees. And this is now looking north. The item of note here is that the retail portion of the building, which is the good portion of the first floor is serviced through the parking that you see on the southern end of the building. There's an overhang and then there's parking striped behind the trees. And this parking is, has very little impact on the residential neighbors. You know, most of it backs onto the current commercial area, which in this case here, the building that's depicted is Wendy's. This is basically the site, you know, a very rough site plan that also shows the floor plan of the building. So the highlights here are number one that about eighty percent of the parking is internalized in the building. And if you refer back to the general plan, that's really one of the goals of the general plan to not have these large surface parking areas. It's not a productive use of land and it doesn't aid walkability. People would like, like to walk where they can see something, you know, windows and so on, but no one seeks out walking next to a large parking lot. The other item you can see here is if you focus on the north, you see the driveway is on the applicants property, but also services Essex Court. And there has been a change there for look at it, as it is right now, there's the median. This, of course, is a good, just a concept proposes to take out the median and use that extra width to have a full dedicated right hand turn and left hand turn. And as I think most of us know, nine hundred east is very busy. The left hand turn can take a while. If you try to do it during rush hour, you may not be able to do a left turn at all. To summarize, the findings here are that the application complies with Midvale Municipal Code Section Seventeen Three One E, which are the general requirements for zone map amendments. And also the specific ones in the RCO, which is seventeen seven twelve one point one. And also from the concept, it's evident that the applicant is not trying to maximize the, the property in a way the zone would theoretically allow. And these are the potential motions, there can be other ones, but the recommended motion is to approve. Best of findings, it has a staff report that I just put on the screen. The alternative would be to deny this. Whether deny, there should also be findings. And so it's, what then concentrate on the criteria that our code gives us. So the general zone map criteria and the ones that go along with the RCO zone. Do you have any questions?
Question I have is, again, we come back to the rezoning and if we just rezone it without some type of a development agreement, we're not guaranteed we're going to get what's on the paper.
Yes. So if you rezone without the aid of a development agreement, you change the zone and all sorts of things could happen. I mean, the property could get sold, someone else could be the developer. That's, that's correct.
So explain to our citizens what a development agreement would do.
Okay. So you have the option in an agreement to basically say what we see as a concept, as a concept here and its attributes, for example, the height of the building, the number of parking spaces, the number of dwelling units, that those could be listed in the development agreement. And then, you know, like any other agreement, both parties sign the agreement and then it becomes legally binding. And development agreement is different than many other agreements in the sense that it stays with the land. So it's attached to the piece of property. If a different developer, developer came into the picture or the land got sold to a different owner, the requirements in the agreements still apply.
So with what the rendering that we see here, if we decide to go into some sort of developing agreement, are we able to amend what we see or is it just saying this is what we're going to be working with? How does that work? Because if we want changes or those kinds of things, what ability do we have?
So I think you can instruct us and then we negotiate with the applicant. And there may be more legal requirements, but generally that's how the process works.
And would we have to approve the zone change, then do the development agreement or get the development agreement first and table the zone change until we get what that looks like?
In this particular case, there's, if the development agreement were to be negotiated, we would, I would recommend tabling the zone item because that is the consideration that the city is giving up in order to have the developer commit to the project that they're committing to in the development agreement.
And then we would still have the ability if the negotiation doesn't yield what we think goes in that space, we could still, even after a development agreement is, is made, we could still deny the zone change.
That would be up to the council. Essentially, if a development agreement is made to the cities, to the city council's liking, once it makes that obligation to the, to the developer, I mean, that is the consideration that the city council is giving up. So if a negotiation is not successful, then, then my recommendation would be to recall that table rezoned item and for the council to formally deny it so that it doesn't remain in one vote.
Thank you.
I, I have a few thoughts or comments that I kind of want to bring up, and I feel like kind of it's my duty on council and something I kind of didn't fully understand as a resident. It's very politically advantageous for me to, you know, go, oh my goodness, you know, make everything two stories or three stories. We use those phrases all the time all over, you know, when we're talking about, you know, density or zoning. And, I mean, I empathize with that. The issue we saw this last legislative, legislative cycle from the state side, and this is what I didn't realize, is the state, being all developers, has decided to essentially penalize cities for doing things that they don't want to do, right? And you think, oh, well, can they do it on a city by city basis? Well, Salt Lake City now cannot put speed bumps in on their roads, or traffic calming, I think was the technical word. For some reason, every other city in, in the state of Utah can put those in, but they have said to Salt Lake City, and they use real technical terms so they don't say Salt Lake City, but it's like the largest city with an airport, I think is what they said. So unless another city gets an airport, I think it's only Salt Lake City. So with that being said, I do think Midvale is, is small population wise and in, and in area compared to a lot of other cities in Salt Lake County. And if we don't show some sort of good faith, if we just say two or three stories, especially for close to, my issue is like ninth east is a, considered a state highway, I agree with you, gets busy, right? And that would be terrible. Or by the track stations, or by the freeway. They'll eventually just tell us we can't zone anymore, right? And then we will get a maximum eighty-five or eighty-six story building there, right? And so, on one hand, I'm always very cautious of encroaching on especially any sort of single family ownership homes. And that could include the type of homes next to it. I'm not saying like a detached only. But the other hand, it's like, how do we have this sort of good faith use case for it? That being said, I don't, I'm not saying I know yet. I, I would have to have a development agreement either way because, again, the maximum doesn't sound very appealing to me, right? I will say, my neighborhood made a very big stink, me included, before I was on council, to downzone some things. And it ended up kind of working out because of parking issues, they didn't want to dig. And we got just three and five, three to five story residential with no commercial. And three to five story residential, so if these all turn into three story townhomes where they just do flats, three story, your parking will be significantly worse than the four story, and there is no retail, right? So it's one of the things I regret to this day because the original idea had some retail. Like there was something like, fine, they own this property, they have, we can't say you can't build anything here, right? And man, if we just gave up, you know, ten or twelve more units, but there was like a coffee shop or a donut shop there, at least I got something else out of it. Now it's just a fenced in property and, you know, rents are so expensive that, you know, which we can't control. They'll have three or four people with cars in each one, and parking's kind of a nightmare, right? So, like I said, I don't really know where I land. I'm just going off my personal experiences. Saying I very much empathize with what you're saying, there is a bigger issue that I worry about on the state side, that I think I need to bring up as much as possible because there are ways to fix that and is, and that is to have different legislators. But until then, that's just the reality. Like if you go through every bill and they're really nuanced and worded weird, and I wouldn't know unless I was on city council. We have a gentleman that comes in every year and outlines all these bills. And I went, oh my goodness, I would never have known about that. So that, that is a consideration that I think we need to just kind of keep in our minds and, and sort of do the best we can. Like a spot zone in the middle of a community, I would go to fight for that all day, right? Like that's a clear, hey, you can't say that we're holding something back, right? Like, but this is kind of on a weird edge and, and, you know, I'm still losing sleep over it. So just, while you guys understand that, it's like, it's, it's a lot to think about.
Just clarification, there is retail on this.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. If they were to, if we were to like deny this and they come back and just say, we're only going to do three story, but we can't afford retail, so we're only going to do residential because it's three story, we've lost it, is my point. Like that's what happened.
Okay, I just try and clarify that.
Yeah.
I have a question, but I think first, the developer is here and I think we should give them an opportunity to speak and then we'll go into public comment and allow the public to speak. So is the developer here? Okay. And if you can just state your name for the record.
Hi, Adam Paul, Mayor Gettle, council members, staff. Good to see you all. Thank you so much for working with us on this. It's been several years now since the fire and we've tried to go through as many iterations as this, if this is possible to make it a, I guess, for lack of a better word, a good compromise that would work for everybody. And we feel confident that this will be an addition to the city and provide affordable housing to those that, that need it and, and safe and secure housing. And we'll go through all, all the requirements that the city will require for safety and fire, et cetera. And with that, we thank you for your time and consideration of this.
Any questions for Adam?
I, I did. You had mentioned affordability. What are we looking at in terms of what these will be priced as?
There's the statistics in Midvale. Now, I think the median home costs four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars and the mortgage is about twenty-four hundred dollars in a, a month. And the average rental rate here will be about eleven to twelve hundred dollars a month. So it's considered affordable compared to buying a home and, and having to rent a home or something like that. So in that regard, it's affordable.
So you're looking at like twelve hundred, thirteen hundred?
Average rental rates, yeah. Maybe, maybe higher if, right, you know, we, we, the market fluctuates so, but much less than owning a home usually. But it's not officially affordable housing. Sometimes that can be used a little, there's no, there's no tax incentives for this. It's not a low income housing, tax credit housing.
What, what, sorry, were you done?
Yeah. I just, I mean, I think saying twelve hundred, like you said, there's fluctuation. I think that is definitely not going to be what you see on these. But, but I think when you're saying it's affordable housing because people can't afford to buy, but they can afford to rent, that, I don't think that's the affordable housing I'm looking for. So just.
I understand that that word can be used.
Yeah.
A lot of different ways. So to be very clear, just the, the monthly cost of living here in, in an apartment project is roughly half or so of owning a home and paying a mortgage these days. So.
I, I think a better, a better way to would have approached this would have been to compare it to other rental rates, I guess. Because that's what I'd be interested in now. Like, the ones by me that are three bedroom are like two grand or more, right? So it would be, if you were going to do thirteen hundred for a three bedroom or whatever, right? Like, that would be significantly cheaper. And I go, that does sound, I hate to use the term affordable because that still seems high, but it is less. Like, so do you know what that?
So, so we'll have a mix of studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms.
Yeah. Yeah.
And so when you aver, I was, I'm averaging those price points.
Totally get that.
So that's, that's why it's hard to compare apples to apples that way.
But what do you think the average, the max average you think you could have done?
This will be a brand new product, so it'd be more expensive than, say, a product that's been around for ten, twenty, thirty years. It will cost more to rent here than
Yeah.
... another older apartment project.
So it's going to be market, market rate?
Market rate, yes, yes.
Okay, so yeah, I, that's a, it's a little, it's affordable in comparison to a mortgage, but not necessarily affordable
That's right.
discount.
That's right. That's right.
Any other questions for Adam from the council? Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
So we are in a public hearing. If the council wants to entertain a motion now to enter into public comment, I'm sure we have a few people in the audience who would like to speak.
Your motion, we open public comment.
Second.
Okay. Motion and several seconds. All those in favor of opening public comments, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Are there any opposed? Okay, we are in public comment. Just to remind everyone in the audience, you'll be given three minutes to speak on this item. We do ask, and I don't think it'll be a problem, but we just ask for everyone to be very respectful during this time. I know emotions can run high when this is in your backyard and you've been here for several hours and several different meetings, but I know everyone is going to be very respectful. So we do have a three minute timer just based on the number of people we anticipate who want to speak. So my three minutes is up. Let's let anyone come on up if you have any comments about this item.
Let me go first. Okay. And I wrote it out, so I won't be long.
Please state your name.
Megan Thione. I was here at our last meeting just to ask if you guys would drive down nine hundred east, just to get a feel for that traffic down there. So thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here today to respectfully urge you to deny the request to add that residential overlay zone to this property. This change may seem like progress on paper, but in reality, it would come at a high cost, especially in terms of safety, quality of life for the people who live, work and travel through this area. My primary concern is public safety. At our last meeting, I invited you to take that drive down nine hundred east during peak hours. And if you did, you likely witnessed the congestion firsthand, cars speeding down that center turn lane, drivers cutting corners in frustration, and pedestrians, often teenagers around Hillcrest High, they were trying to cross the street while staring down at their phones. I'm a teacher, so I see this all the time with the teenagers. These teens, especially from Hillcrest High, are developing awareness and decision-making skills. Many of them are also becoming new drivers, inexperienced drivers, and the increased traffic from a high-density development will only add to the danger. This is not just about inconvenience, it's about preventing accidents, injuries, and even tragedy. We should not move forward with a development plan that clearly compromises safety. Now, I think we can all agree that we want to have this property developed. It'd be good for Midvale City. But the development should be smart, not just profitable. The proposed high-rise, high-density apartment complex may be a short-term gain, but it brings long-term strain to local infrastructure and the surrounding community. Last year, the property owner shared that she explored other uses for the land, like offices, fast food restaurants or a car wash, but dismissed them, I assume for not being profitable enough. But the question we should be asking is, what is the most beneficial to the community? So not just what brings the biggest return. On a personal note, my family truly valued the local dentist office that used to be on that site. We'd love to support more local businesses and serve the community and have it be better for everybody, not just more crowded. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Megan. Next, state your name for the record, and you'll be given three minutes.
I'm Kathy, I'm Kathy, well, with allergies, sorry, I can't get my voice out. And I'm a resident locally here in Midvale, close to where this development would be, right across the street from Fair Meadows. Mayor Gettle, city council and staff, I would like to know what research was done on the water issue of having this type of a building with all these residents. I would like to ask the developer what his et cetera was when he said he's taken into consideration a lot of things, et cetera, et cetera. Does that include the water that was needed from the other side of the street from Fair Meadows area when the building was on fire? Does he know about the egress as well, if we had another earthquake?
Thank you for your comments, Kathy. Anyone else? And state your name for the record.
My name's Edward Kimball. I'm a longtime resident of Essex Court and a homeowner. And my purpose for addressing you tonight is just like last year, Essex Court is against this proposed construction. We submitted comments. We disagree with staff on their analysis on MMC seventeen dash three dash one dash E, MMC seventeen dash seven dash one two point one one. We also disagree with where they came around with Utah code ten dash nine A dash ten. And I'm not going to go into them here. I'm going to ask you to read our comments. We went into detail where we could. We also have another question. This is the third iteration, actually the fourth, that we have seen of what could be put on this property. We've seen that there could be an office building, eighty-five feet high, covering the full footprint of that. We saw that last year, not this year. So we've seen three iterations of this. Our question is, if this is approved, what's going to be built? There's no commitment anywhere. When I go through the packet that was put out, I don't see a commitment. I see an idea again, or this is what could be used, there's no commitment. We've talked about development agreement. Would we have any input on that development agreement? Or is that strictly between staff, city council and the developer? There are some issues with this. We find two flaws in what this design has, and they're in our comments. So I'm not going to go into them. I'm going to ask you to read our comments. We pointed out two major flaws here, and we'd also like those flaws addressed in any I think it's also very important that the developer and the council realize the negative impact this is going to have on Essex Court. The driveway that they've talked about redoing and everything, there's going to be major congestion on that every single day going in and out of Ninth East. And there has been no reference to consulting with UDOT about the impact on that. And we did make a phone call, and we were told off the cuff that there would probably, with the size of vehicles or numbers coming out, I'm watching the clock, there would be right turn only on that. That's going to be a nightmare. It's a nightmare right now. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Edward. Anyone else? And state your name for the record, please? Thank you.
So my name is Sam Kingor. I'm a resident of Essex Court, opposed to the rezoning. I agree with the previously determined decision by city council and planning that the RCRO does not apply at this location. That particular zoning was meant for large parking lots with all kinds of easy access in and around it. This is not that kind of location. The last planning commission that made reference to traffic studies that were done, part of the Midvale Fort Union Corridor study last year, in those studies, the zoning of the property did not change, it still remained the same. Therefore, the traffic impacts studied did not account for this particular property change. The proposed residential parking, commercial parking counts are greater than what would be there if it was just commercial use, and the residential use is twenty-four seven, commercial tends to be nine to five. Traffic's going to be worsened at one of the most dangerous intersections in Midvale. So all these ideas of corridor studies and things are fine, but what is the long-term planning? We can add a bunch of housing units in places because Utah wants to encourage it, but then are we ready for it? I don't think the city of Midvale is ready for it. Are we going to need new bonds, new traffic studies, further improvements above and beyond what we see here today? Will this project, if approved, to move forward contribute towards that? Ideally, it would, but it should be part of a comprehensive approach and understanding, you know, that could be part of a development agreement, but I would suggest that actually the mixed-use zoning would have been much more appropriate to propose, has much more benefits for the city. You just need a conditional use permit to codify the number of units for the project, and it's part of a master plan development for that area. That would have been a much more appropriate zoning. I do have concerns that if this zoning were approved by itself and goes forward, as it's been talked about, it could simply flip to someone else at some point. Essex Court is landlocked, it doesn't have any other access, the current residential proposed exit is onto that same access. That's a violation of the easement, in my opinion, a violation of the allowance for emergency ingress and egress. There is no other way for Essex Court to get out. It's like bottlenecking everything, especially during school pickup and drop-off, which is going to get crazy in the morning. So these are my comments. Look forward to a decision that positively affects us all.
Thank you for your comments, Sam. Hello, state your name for the record, please.
My name is Mikell Hanny. I live in Essex Court and I serve on our HOA board. I'm not here to say no to growth, I'm here to say we need to do it right. The proposal in front of you doesn't meet that bar. Let's start with the obvious. Yes, we're all tired of staring at four-foot tall weeds at the entrance of Essex Court, and I'm not opposed to something better there. I'd love to walk with my twin daughters to a neighborhood cafe or shop, but what's been proposed is incomplete and unsafe. At the planning commission's recommendation, I dug into the city's studies. I also reviewed the Midvale's transportation master plan, Fort Union Corridor study and housing plan. And after going through all of it, here's what I found for this particular location: no traffic study, no pedestrian safety analysis, and no plan for emergency vehicle access. This project funnels all of its traffic, potentially hundreds of cars a day, straight to Essex Court. Yes, we'd love to get rid of that median on our street, but that's not a traffic plan, that's a detail. There's still no full-scale review of how this will affect turning conflicts we have with Fair Meadows, pedestrian risk or intersection load, and no consideration to where fire trucks are supposed to go if another fire were to happen. And that's a big deal. The transportation master plan shows over thirty-two hundred crashes in Midvale from 2019 to 2022. Many of those were on roads just like Ninth East, high-speed, high-volume, and not designed with pedestrians in mind. Meanwhile, the Fort Union Corridor Study and the Entry Points Plan both say the same thing. Development should transition gently into neighborhoods. It should improve walkability, strengthen the city's visual identity, and serve the people already living nearby. This proposal ignores all that. It doesn't meet the standard the city has already set. I walk Ninth East regularly with my daughters on our way to Wheeler Farm. It's already a tricky area. Ill-maintained sidewalks that make a double stroller feel like the Indiana Jones ride in Disneyland. No bicycle lane and constant trash. And nothing in this plan makes it easier or safer for us. In fact, higher density increases these issues. Now, I know there's a developmental plan on paper, but let's be real, plans change. What doesn't change? A developmental agreement. That's what locks in protections for residents, that's what guarantees safe access, proper design and follow-through. Midvale deserves better than approve it now and fix it later. This is a moment to set the tone for how we grow and who we serve. Mayor, city council members, please do not approve this rezon until a full traffic study, safety and infrastructure analysis is done in this specific area, and a legally binding developmental agreement is in place, one that responds to the concerns of nearby residents and the safety of our community. Midvale has a duty to its current residents and constituents, not just future tenants. Thank you.
Thank you, Mikell. Would anyone else like to address the council at this time? And again, I feel like a broken record, but please state your name.
You're great. My name is David McBride. I'm the property owner just north of this proposed development sovereign financial group. We submitted a lengthy, detailed letter from my legal counsel yesterday, would simply just ask and reiterate the issues that have already been brought forward. I am a little troubled as I see some of the drawings or some of the renderings of what is there. It is not indicative of the size and scope of what is proposed. I believe, based on our legal work, that the city council, we disagree completely on a number of these fronts and believe that the interpretations are incorrect specifically. There is, our view is that this is being spot zoned for this development only. Again, as was previously said, a development agreement would significantly protect the residents and other property owners. It would not be, and it's not outside the scope of reality that this property could be sold, another developer comes in, and if these zone changes are allowed, what we believe, again, they are renderings only. There's nothing that's binding that protects any of the existing property owners, residents and whatnot. So I would just simply request and ask that you carefully read our letter, take an honest look at what that does, consider that all the zoning that's been looked at in this regard benefits not all of us, it benefits, benefits the sole property owner to the detriment of the rest of us. I appreciate your time and just would ask for your consideration and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, David. And again, just state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Emmy Cordano. I am an owner in Essex Court. And good evening to all of you. Thank you for listening to us. I'm extremely concerned about this monstrosity, and I refer to it as a monstrosity because nowhere along Fort Union in Midvale is there any height and size of a building this big. So why is this going in here? It doesn't fit in this area. It might fit in the middle of where the new Momentum Gym is, but it certainly, this height and size, there's nothing like this on the full length of Fort Union, all the way through Midvale. So how is this in compliance? How is this going to help us? This is going to destroy this area. And as a point of procedure, we've submitted our letters and our comments, we've signed petitions, signed by ninety percent of Essex Court. Aren't you going to make a decision tonight? So if some of you haven't read those comments or read those petitions or anything like that, aren't you going to decide tonight? Doesn't this get decided tonight?
This isn't typically a question and answer session, but I will
I'm sorry, I do understand that.
No, that's okay. But this will count towards your time for an answer.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it is on the agenda for an action item tonight, but anything can be tabled for a different time.
Okay.
Approved, denied, table are the options.
So if, if you have not had a chance to read Mr. McBride's submission, which was yesterday, if you've not had a chance to read our Essex Court submission through our homeowners association, I would beg you to please table this because there's been a lot of questions asked and we don't have any answers. So I'm not sure how, how you, as our representatives, can actually approve any of that without those answers. So we don't have answers about water, we don't have answers about So, we don't have answers about water, we don't have answers about safety. In my humble opinion, this is a violation of the easement. So, the road that they are proposing that be used for the ingress and egress of this development is based on an easement. So, how does this level of unit numbers comply with that easement? I don't think it does. And then lastly, how many people here are here in favor of the development? So, four people. I counted, there were 47 people, so that means four people are in favor of this and 43 people are not. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Emmy. All right, and state your name for the record.
My name is Joe Sims, I live in Fair Meadows, and all I want to say is that the traffic problem is crazy out there right now. Everyone who drives at 9th East knows that, and it's 24/7. That's just the way it is. And I think this, the fact that the developer, that no one's going to hold his feet to the fire, and they can do whatever they want. So, there has to be a development agreement so that we can look at it and go like, well, we like that, we don't like that, we like that, or we don't like that. You just can't give someone, take it, oh yeah, I'll do that for you. I don't trust, it's hard for me to trust. I think everybody here, there's 44 people that are saying that they're against it, I'm with them.
Thank you, Joe. As Ronald Reagan said, "Trust but verify," that's what Joe says as well. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment? Welcome, and please just state your name for the record.
My name is Ida Baghumiyan, mayor, council. Thank you for seeing us today. I felt like it was important just to communicate from our standpoint that we've owned this property for over 20 years. It has not taken lightly in terms of our desire to accommodate and consider the neighboring communities. We have gone through, I think it was mentioned, that we had looked at other iterations, and I think it didn't come down to solely profitability. There are many reasons that we didn't further consider those ideas, such as a car wash. I was concerned that there would be a lot of noise, they have loud dryers, there are a lot of things that went into those ideas that didn't come to fruition. So, I just wanted to make clear that they have, I have met with Fair Meadows, I have met with Essex from the beginning of this process, because it was my family's intent to find a solution that was reasonable, that was considerate of our community and to Midvale. So, I want to reiterate, with the development agreement, you know, after having gone through the Planning Commission, we received unanimous approval through that process, because I think the idea being that if we had this development agreement, that we would be held to a specific plan. Our intent isn't to pull a fast one, to make changes that the community wouldn't agree with. Our intent is very much to be held to that plan. And I think, I just wanted to make sure that there was an understanding across the board that that was very much our goal. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Ida. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment on this item?
One more comment, Adam Pauligan. There's a lot of concern about safety, water, pedestrian, car, traffic. We are also concerned about those things, and as a developer, we will be going through the city's building department to get a permit to build this building, and the process there will be city staff and fire and police will review the project to make sure that there is sufficient water, there is sufficient safety measures in place, that traffic can be handled in a safe and safer way than it is now. That is the intent of redevelopment. So, we don't want to change anything to make it less safe. We will be invested in the community, we want our residents that may live here to feel safe and be safe. And so, I just wanted to express that that isn't necessarily, we can just do whatever we want, we will be held to certain code standards that the city and UDOT and Fire Department and Police all require. So, I just thought I'd mention that. Thank you very much for hearing that.
Thank you again, Adam. Would anyone else like to comment on this public hearing item? Okay, oh, okay, we got, at least one more. And just state your name for the record.
My name is Kevin Davis, I live in Fair Meadows. It's a gated community, and I used to work for the Oxnard PD in California, I was a crime analyst. We used computers and statistics to determine whether the crime was happening there in Oxnard. And the developer said that most of the apartments, studios, and the one bedroom apartment is going to be $1,100 to $1,200, low-income or...
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Yeah, Kevin, if you could speak into the mic so we can all hear.
Well, most of the crime, high-crime areas in Oxnard, California, were in areas where there was low-income housing. And I'm just wondering if maybe they should decide to make a park out of this land, you know, make it, make an open space park, that type of situation. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Kevin. Would anyone else like to make a public comment about this item? Going once, twice? I will entertain a motion to close public comment.
Motion to close public comment.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor of closing public comments, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, public comment is over for this item. Are there any other clarifying questions from the council? Or comments?
I have a comment on here, because I have spent a considerable amount of time, I first want to kind of give a disclaimer, I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an expert, but I have done a lot of research on trying to figure out, you know, what are the concerns that I've heard from the residents, and how can those be mitigated, what have we done to help kind of mitigate those? So, I just kind of like give that disclaimer. I have taken this issue very seriously, I've spent a lot of time walking around the property, driving past it, talking with residents, phone, text, email, spoken to the owner. So, I've really tried to take this decision seriously, and I do have some concerns about the direction of this proposal, and I think really it kind of comes down to the very real and very likely disruption that this would cause for the area, and not just to the existing residents of Essex Court or the businesses that already operate there, but to any future resident as well in this space. With the combined units being proposed in this, 140, with the 72 units that exist in Essex Court, you're looking at about 215, 220 units that one single access point is going to have to serve for this space. And it's going onto a very busy roadway, a road that already sees congestion and significant through traffic. It's not just an inconvenience, but as many have stated here today, could potentially be unsafe for the residents. Again, I want to do this disclaimer, I'm not an expert, but I've been trying to kind of figure out what best practices are for stuff like this, and the Federal Highway Administration does provide a comprehensive guidance on access management, and in the context of residential developments, they have suggested that for larger developments should incorporate multiple access points to help with that traffic flow and mitigate the congestions and potential safety risks. And that also aligns with general engineering guidance that kind of says, there's not set fast numbers on this, but generally about 150 units, a single entry point is not recommended for that space. Creates bottlenecks, and that could strain emergency response access, potentially create collisions, and can undermine the overall quality of life that is going to be in this space. And so, I just want to make sure we're considering all of those things, and I do think that any development added into this area should enhance the area and not overwhelm it. I do feel like this could be overwhelming for this space. And like other people have kind of pointed out, a comprehensive traffic study that goes beyond not just modeling the 900 East and how that's going to affect that flow, but also how that internal flow is going to look with that one access point there, and how that would, with those real-world estimates for what residents there would experience day-to-day, and what that looks like, how emergency access will be guaranteed, and what the mitigation steps would be to prevent the kind of disruption that everybody is concerned about. I think growth and development is really important, but I think we have to be responsible and make sure that that doesn't come at the expense of safety or livability. And so, at this point, I think with this kind of disruption that could be there, I think in this moment, without any kind of, you know, development agreement that really takes into consideration a lot of these things, I think the current zone makes sense in this space. And so, those are just kind of my thoughts on it, as I've spent a lot of time looking at some of these things. Again, a development agreement would be good, I think the current rendering that we're seeing is not quite there yet, and so I think that would be something that we would need to look at. But that's kind of where I'm kind of feeling at this point. I think with the disruption this could cause, I think we might need to accept that the commercial, the current zone is what makes sense there.
I have to agree with you. I've walked this proposed project numerous times and numerous times a day, listening to you guys saying that, you know, specific times are really heavy on traffic right there. And I think that actually led me more to believe that we've got the zoning right on this one. It doesn't have a residential component for me, and I feel like adding that many units, as Ms. Billings said, that it's just, we need to do development, but better thought-out development, and I'm just not sure this is the one.
More questions, comments?
You know, either way, I would not want to do anything until we had a development agreement in place. On the same token, I wouldn't want to give the developer like this, hey, maybe we'll do this, and they spend a bunch of money on traffic studies and stuff, and then we still deny it, right? So, I think we'd have to come to some sort of base understanding before we even cross that bridge. But I wouldn't want a full rezone, because, you know, things, weird things have happened where it doesn't work, and then they sell the property, and a new person comes in and builds to the max of the new one. That being said, I have mixed emotions about the current zoning, that's kind of one of my worries as well, because it can be astronomically more disruptive if they build to the max of the current zoning, right? So, I think we're, we need to be sort of careful saying, hey, we don't want to do this because of this, a commercial or whatever space there that's seven stories, I mean, think if they put a call center in, it would be significantly more than, you know, the 150 units, right? So, I think if we say, hey, worry about this, we deny it, and they say, fine, and they put something that's even five, like a five-story building that was. So, I don't know if current zoning is what I like for that purpose, right? But we can't just necessarily make a change, because that could trigger a whole bunch of other things, like a downzone. So, there's just a lot of delicate parts here, right? Like, if the original was like a three-story commercial type thing, I could see that being the case, but they could make something a lot bigger with a lot more cars going in through one access point. And for business purposes, there's typically more traffic, right? Like, people are coming in and out to go different shifts, and that could be worse. So, I guess I don't really know where I stand, other than I do require a development agreement, and I also require a mixed-use component, no matter what. Like, I'm not a fan of just residential, you know, for those purposes, but what that looks like, it seems like there's a lot of opinions up here or down there, and I'm just one, so I don't know how to make that work.
One of the things that I kind of want to touch on is, you know, the current zone could, if they build out to the max, I agree, would be disruptive as well. I think, I can't, I know that that's kind of been hanging over us and that kind of thing, but I also can't imagine that there's a market for an eight-story call center.
There's not today.
Well, yeah, no, I know that today, but it's like, are we going to just leave it empty for 10 years until there could potentially be, you know, those kinds of things? And so, I'm not sure that's something I want to have, you know, hang over that. But I hear that, I know that's something I've been thinking about as well, but, yeah.
But we don't own the property, right? So, they could sit on it, and it would be more disruptive, because there will be a coming time where that, it will make sense to build something that's eight stories there, whether that's when we're on council, or the next group, or the group after that, that's what's hard.
I understand that, but we also, like, the commercial component looks different now. You know what I mean? Before COVID, yeah, it was going to be a heavy lift, there was going to be eight units with a million businesses in there, but it doesn't look that way anymore. My building's the max amount of commercial on that. I still, I still am in the opinion that this isn't, to me, a residential component.
And that makes sense, I just meant the disruptive. It will be more disruptive if they do that, and so, but we couldn't deny that, right? If it comes in with what it is, so we've denied something that might have been better and less disruptive than what could be there. So, I don't like to be in fear, but that's more like a reality, right?
I have one question that maybe Vendeline or staff can answer. Knowing that it's been the wish of the council to have a development agreement for these types of rezone requests, why was one not submitted with this rezone application? I know we have discussed it with this specific project in the past. It just seems to me that having that development agreement as part of this, which we have done in the past, would have streamlined the process a bit. It kind of puts us in this, now we have three options here tonight: table, approve, deny. And I don't think anyone, even if they came to us tonight with the best project ever that all of us, I'm a non-voting member of the council, approved of or liked for this area, we still wouldn't approve it without the development agreement. So, it seems to me that the options before us are to deny or to approve, because I just don't see, like, the developers said what they've submitted to us is what they plan to build. So, again, I wouldn't suggest that we take their word for it, we would want something in writing to say that this is what's going to be there. However, I also don't think that the developer is going to pull the rug out from under us and build, you know, something different. So, my caution to the council is that if your predilection is to deny the rezone request, that that's probably what we should consider, rather than, you know, as Councilmember Brown said, tabling it, they come with a development agreement that looks remarkably like this one, and then we deny it, we've wasted a lot of people's time and money. So, that's, you know, that's just my opinion as a non-voting member of the council.
So, Mayor, I'd like to respond to that. As you recall, we did make an effort to use the workshops in order to have the council determine if development agreements would be appropriate to be working on in advance of the city council's consideration of the zoning request. After making that attempt a couple of times, there was direction provided that that method was not working out. Some of it was because there was confusion by the public as to whether or not working on a development agreement in advance or weighing in on it was indicating that we had made a decision already. And so, at that point, we discussed that we would just go forward with there being a rezone, if the council was at least amenable to there being a rezone, that we would then do the development agreement at the end. We recognized that that is not the most efficient method, and that's why we had attempted to try the other route, to try to have a development agreement at this time. So, we would, the decisions that the council would have tonight are deny, approve without a development agreement, or, as we did with, I forget the exact address, but the project that's off of State Street, is that we can table, and again, this is not, if your intent is to deny, then don't go down this road, right? If the council's intent is deny, but if the intent is to approve with a development agreement, you would table, provide some direction to staff as to the things that are important to you to be identified within that development agreement, and then staff would proceed on attempting to negotiate that agreement and return to the council with the zoning request and that negotiated development agreement. But like I said, that's... negotiated, um, development agreement. Um, but like I said, that's, um, so those are kind of your three options. But if you do say, decide to table and look for a development agreement, it is, like I said, crucial that we have some direction as to what, um, uh, the council would like to have included in that agreement. Um, so just saying table and negotiated development agreement would not be the best outcome.
So I worked really hard on the development agreement we just got through with not too long ago on State Street. And that took seven or eight months of the developer talking to me at least once a month or more, asking me what are the things. And I went, I went to the citizens and asked them what they really wanted. And we, it took a long time, but we got most of the things that they wanted, we were able to accomplish. Not everything. They didn't get, I mean, if, if they got everything, they wouldn't have had the development. Okay. But they got a lot of what concerned them. So it is doable and I think it's the way to go, actually. Uh, I mean, you can talk to your representative in that area, but you can all talk, call all of us and say, these are the things that are important to us. If we go with the development agreement, we can go to the developer and say, yes, we would like you to do a development agreement, but there's going to be some things you're going to have to work out and give them that opportunity. If they don't want to do that and they think that's just too much to do, then they just don't proceed. But I guarantee it, you're going to be back here in another year, okay? And we're going to do the same thing over again and over again until something's approved. So to me, a development gives you the opportunity to get at least some of the things that you're really concerned about and be able to have a development that'll work. We do have, just across from Hillcrest High, we have that development as five stories, just so you know how high five stories is. So there are other five stories in Midvale. Uh, you don't want to get me, five is by limit, okay? I won't vote for anything over five stories, as everybody here already knows. But I, I'm concerned that if you don't have a development agreement and try to develop that reasonably, that eventually something's going to come in there and it's not going to be what you want, but it is good with the zoning that's there now and this council will have no say in what's going to happen to you. So my feeling is, is the development agreement at least gives you an opportunity to have input on what's going to happen. Whether you get everything you want or not, probably not, but that's just my opinion.
And I, I agree that no matter what, there would need to be a development agreement, right? Anything, there's reason I always suggested anyways, right? Just for protection, especially with traffic. Like I definitely think a traffic study would be needed. Um, for example, like it might, it might come out and say, having three, three turns here, a left, a left or right and an end might not pass, right? Like we, we'd want to know that before, you know, we just sort of make that decision because it sounds nice, like oh, it opens us up, but then we find out, oh, that doesn't, right? So definitely on board with a development agreement, but those things just cost money and time and, and I, I don't want to be the person that says, yeah, we're going to do development agreement and, and the only thing that would be okay is like two stories and they spend lots of money and, and whatever. So like, I think we're, Bonnie might have more insight into what they feel or don't. I'm not trying to put her on, um, under, you know, under the bus or something, but she can always talk to us or you guys can and, and work with the developer. But yeah, I wouldn't want to approve a rezone that would run with, with the land without, without one, including stuff like traffic studies and water. They will have to do that. I think that's normal in a development, right? Like they'll have to see if the water's there. Just so you guys know, but I agree, they would have to, you know, you would, you would hate to have something that, you know, materially impacted, something like a watershed. So.
Yeah. Yeah. And I agree. I think the traffic study is, uh, should be required for that, for this specific, for, you know, what we're looking at in terms of the amount, the, the amount of units that are going to be proposed in addition to what exists with Essex Court, in addition to the entry access points, um, point or access points. I think that should be, you know, that would be something that I would require before.
Can that be done before anything else? The traffic study or is that, I, I'm new to this process, but I feel like that's come up several times and in the comments that were sent, which I did read through, is the traffic concern? Like can we do that, um, analysis first and then decide how to move forward or no?
I think they could do it first. It just costs money, right? And so I think they'd probably want some sort of reasonable reliability that, something close because that's what I'm getting at, right?
You can always ask the developer if they would be amenable to that and then we can table this item pending the outcome of that traffic study.
Is that something the developer would be amenable to by show of a thumbs up or thumbs down in the back? Not to put you on?
I was being talked to by a citizen, so I didn't hear that.
Okay.
At that point.
The question was, um, would you be willing to do a traffic study prior to approval?
Absolutely. Um, we'd be willing to do that. And just one quick, um, clarification, there is two entrances to the prop, uh, to our proposed project at this point. So there, it isn't all going out and in Essex Court, there's an ingress egress on the, uh, south side of the property as well, too.
For clarification though, that's just, that doesn't connect to Essex Court or anything. It doesn't connect.
No, but the residents could go out or in and the commercial goes out or in that.
Right. Yeah.
So it's not all going to Essex Court. It's the only, only point.
Right. The about 210, 215 units, including the Essex Court, would be using the one entry point though, right?
At, at this point, I, yes, I think so, but there's, it's not, I just, there is another for the commercial aspect of it that goes. And we could connect them too, if that's something that we decide through a traffic study is helpful.
Yeah. And like, and I think that's something to look at for sure. And I think, um, because I, you know, I've considered that too. I'm like, well, there's always still this thing. Can we connect it? But again, without any kind of study to know if that's even going to alleviate any of it, you know, I think is something we need to look at.
So this, this south entrance is just the retail parking.
Right now it's just for retail.
Doesn't connect. I couldn't, kind of looks like it goes underneath over here. So I couldn't tell.
It tucks under the door a little.
And you obviously can all see where I'm pointing right now.
I can't see where you're pointing, but I have a pretty good image in my head.
You're on the big screen.
Yes. Okay. I, because there's the O-ring. So it doesn't connect, but you.
Doesn't, but it could.
It'd be amenable.
Okay. Thanks again, Adam.
Thank you.
Are there any other clarifying questions or comments from the council? Okay. There are several, okay. Well, we have closed public comment, uh, so it would take a motion from the council to reopen public comment if they, uh, so choose. Not seeing that. Uh, there are, uh, several recommended motions for the council, uh, for this particular item.
Sorry. I just want to add one other quick thing. Sorry. Uh, to, I just blew up, blew the flow on that one. I'm sorry.
Thanks, Matt.
Um, I was just going to say, uh, I do think it's important though, that I've been hearing the concerns about the traffic studies and what, and whatever sort of comes up. I think that, um, if you already have a perspective that, um, even if a traffic study came back and said that it was viable or came up with a path, but it's not the right use, we definitely want to make sure that we're not sending anyone down a direction that there's no, there's a view, there's no solution for. So, um, I mean, it sounded like that was the way that it was going. And then I interrupted Paul, so I probably just made everything worse. But so anyways, I just, I want to make sure that it's clear though, that like, if, if you want, if you, if the emphasis is that there's a traffic study and that there's a development agreement, if that's the route you go, further direction is going to be really helpful in that perspective, in that.
Well, actually, definitely, uh, we needed to be able to tell the developer in a reasonable time, these are the things that we, you need to address and see if we can get as many of those things addressed for the concerns. And then he can, the developer can decide, do I want to move forward or not? We need to be clear what's expected because I don't think we want the developer, a development agreement. We go through all of this stuff and then we come back and say, no.
Yeah.
It is a request that they're asking for. Like we, we, I don't know, well, Paul probably made the decision on the original zoning since he's been on council since Midvale Incorporated. But, um.
The early 1900s.
Yeah, the early 1900s. But, um.
19, or what, 1847.
Jokes aside, probably since this property's been in Midvale though. When we acquired this property, Councilmember Glover was probably, right? It was unincorporated, right?
Exactly.
But the rest of us weren't and, and we, we tried to defer to previous council, right? Like they, they obviously thought about it. So, um, you know.
Actually, just so you know, it was Salt Lake County that did all that zoning. It wasn't Midvale.
And then we just took it on?
Yep.
Okay. Um, well then we, we don't defer to them at all. Forget, forget them. Um, you know, so at that point, like they do have to make a compelling case to the city to make a change and that means working through things. And if that takes seven or eight months, it takes seven or eight months, they can put something else there if they don't want to, right? And, and that doesn't have to be the seven story office building. That's not what I'm getting at, but it's not like the only option is of, you know, farm or something, right? Like a very minimal use that you can't, you couldn't make money off of, right? Because that would be an argument that they could make, like this is impossible, right? So there are use cases there. Um, so, you know, I think we should, if we're going to go down the development agreement stuff, and I agree with you, but at the same time, you know, it, it, it won't be tomorrow that it'll be decided.
Right. I was going to say, I don't think that tonight, we're going to be able to set all the parameters on what exactly we're looking at, but definitely making that commitment to work with the developer, to read all of the information that we've received from residents so far, to reconnect and that kind of thing. Um, and like, like Councilman, uh, Brown said, it's not going to happen tonight overnight, but absolutely a commitment to work on that.
If I could make a suggestion, um, we could, uh, table, if that's what the council wants to do, and then bring this back as another workshop item, uh, where we can discuss with the developer and the community perhaps, um, but specifically with the developer, what we, the council would love to see in a development agreement for this particular site. Um, otherwise I just don't want everyone to keep spinning their wheels and get nowhere. So, um, so I, I know it's, as Councilmember Billings said, it's very difficult for us to say, these are the parameters we want in a motion to table right now. But if we simply tabled the motion and then bring it back in a, a lengthier, uh, workshop discussion, I think that might be a, a good way to proceed.
So, so I, I mostly agree with the mayor, other than I, I think it needs to be workshop without the developer. I feel like that way we can, to start, because, you know, like kind of the first I've heard, you know, Councilmember Robinson say, like, you know, residential just doesn't work there, right? Like it's not necessarily just height or density. It's like, when I walk there, and I respect that, like that's a very interesting point. So I think maybe the five of us need to be able to, to say those things without worrying, you know, like without the developer. And then the process might go, okay, you know, staff takes that to developer and then he says, or she says like, yeah, this isn't going to work. Or then they can come to us.
Start the negotiation.
Yes, start the negotiation. But I think we would be a little more open. Do you guys agree? Like if it's just, you know, I mean, it's open to the public, so they could come and, and watch, but not necessarily give a presentation or anything. Like it's, that's us saying like, this is what I see there. Cause that, uh, it would've been good to know, you know, like on these things, like Councilmember Robinson's feelings, like I, I didn't really ever consider that. Um, and now I'm going to, right? So.
I think if we're going to go that route, we also need to make sure that the residents, we find a way to alert the residents, maybe a little bit better than just the standard notification that goes out. Not sure if we can get in touch with the gentleman from Essex Court. Um, I think he's attended every meeting about this, so I think he might be a good source for us to be able to make contact to a larger group.
The good thing about Essex Court is that we already have a lot of literature on what they do and don't want.
Having said that, we did receive all of your comments. We read them. So you need to know that we actually do read this stuff.
And we have, we have like an iPad up here. You can't see it, but I have your comments up. So when you come up, I go back to your, to what, you know, your person's name, I scroll, look for it and go, okay, they said this. So yeah, that was awkward.
Okay. Um, again, there are several alternatives to proceed with if the council is willing to make a motion at this point. That was the polite way of saying, let's get to the next item.
I will make a motion that we table of this until we've had the opportunity to work on a development agreement possibility. And so is that all I need?
Does it need the ordinance number or anything? Second, if not.
If, if we're, if we're doing this in a workshop, then we won't need the ordinance number because no action can be taken in the workshop.
Okay. All right.
So just table.
Yeah. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to table this item. Uh, Rory, will you call the A's and A's?
Yes. Councilmember Robinson.
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Uh, Michelash?
Yes.
Billings?
Yes.
And Glover?
Yes.
Okay. That motion to table passes, carries four to one. Uh, so I do want to thank everyone again for showing up for this item. Uh, we do appreciate your comments and your time and we do appreciate even more the civility that we saw in the public comments today. So thank you very much. To be continued. Moving on to our third public hearing of the evening, uh, we will consider a zone map amendment from the single family residential duplex overlay SF1D0 zone to multifamily residential. Uh, to discuss this is Vendeline, I believe. Vendeline, welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Maybe we'll just give a minute for everyone to, to leave so we can hear. And I didn't say it, but these are properties located at 6854 South 700 East and 6852 South 700 East.
So I think it has calmed down enough, hasn't it? Um, here's the context again for this, um, zone map amendment. Um, the property fronts onto 700 East. Um, it's relatively far north in the city. It's closer to I-215 than it is to Fort Union Boulevard. Um, the property is also about 3.7 acres. It's practically a flat lot. There's a long driveway and a really quite a large parcel of land at the end of this driveway. Um, it's surrounded by single family users to the northeast and west and then to the south is another condominium project. And, um, this, you know, just like in the 100 East location, of course, this part of the city used to be in Salt Lake County, was administered by Salt Lake County, so we do have some pre-existing users that don't comply with today's zoning and will get to that. Otherwise, um, this, if I trust you've probably been at this parcel and seen that there are already some existing users, um, that the applicant value behavioral health has owned for a long time and run. Um, and the way this all feeds into the general plan now is, here's our map again. Um, the applicant's property, if you notice, our two categories in the general plan are opportunity area or stability area. The opportunity areas on this version of the map are the areas that are shaded in. And this is truly far away from the opportunity areas. It's in the, in the middle of a residential so, um, area and also zone. Um, and our general plan lists the goals for the stability areas. And to summarize, it's basically we stay as we are. There are some goals in there that you, um, that you can see here, improve the quality of the housing stock, expand the variety of housing opportunity. the variety of housing opportunities, um, even support development of affordable housing, the, the only item that one has to remember is number five, says encourage higher density residential in appropriate locations in opportunity areas, so our, um, general plan, you know, squarely says, we want higher intensity users in opportunity areas, but not in stability areas, I mean, that's, that's very clear in the document. Zoning completes the picture, this is all single-family residential, um, as I mentioned before, the condominium project is pre-existing, it's a non-conforming use, and so, um, on this map, the yellow shading is the SF1D0 zone, single-family residential with duplex overlay, that means it allows for twin homes or duplexes, um, to the northeast, that green shading is the SF2 zone, that doesn't allow for duplexes, it's purely, um, single-family. This is the concept that the applicant gave us, um, the explanation was that this would yield about forty-eight additional dwelling units, and, um, here's the front, excuse me, different angles, and the two existing buildings are also shown on the rendering. In this case, there's one set of rules, the general rules that pertain to zone changes, and, um, there the same as, as the previous application, um, first, that's the proposed rezoning promote the objectives of the general plan, um, with the marking of stability areas and opportunity areas, um, the answer is no, we did that, and, um, was this, we sought to declare a error or mistake of fact, that the base zone, the common zone, is the way it is, I think that's, uh, we did that, so no sense, zoning has ordered this, this all came into mid-well, um, with the annexation in the nineties, um, then has land or its surrounding environment, environs changed, or is it changing, um, so that it would be in the public interest to encourage redevelopment, to change the zone, and the answer here is, we know this is a pretty stable area in the city. Does this promote the purposes outlined in Utah code annotated ten-nine-eight-one or two, um, to me, that was debatable, it depends on which point of view you take, Valley Behavioral Health, the applicant will also speak later, and, um, they run a program that's definitely something as a society we need, I think there's no question, um, the question, so in the zoning context is how, um, number one, does it fit into this given environment, and, um, then you wonder, well, yes, on this parcel, if you absolved it, there would be more affordable housing, there would be more opportunities for people to get maybe treatment that they need, um, however, is the environment the right one? What are the impacts on the neighboring properties? And, um, so I, I took that perspective in, in this case, and, um, I came to the answer, no, it, it does not promote these purposes, but of course, one can, you know, look at that in different ways, like so many things in life, um, the findings then are that the criteria for, for zone amendments are not met, um, and that's supported by that the parcel is in the stability area of our general plan, and that this parcel is surrounded by everywhere, by the SF1 zone, and, yeah, the potential motions, of course, you can also go the tabling route, um, and, and entertain a development agreement, in this case, you could, for example, do that as well.
Thank you, Vendeline, any questions or comments for Vendeline?
So, how is this not spot zoning?
Well, that's a spot, that's a good question, if you look at the map, this is a spot zone that is being asked for, um, the, the question though is, how in, in the law is that really anchored, and, and how far does that, you know, inform what we do? The city attorney can probably go deeper into that than I can, but it is, it's a spot zone on the surface.
Okay, I just wanna, Gary doesn't need, doesn't need to at the moment, I just wanna make sure, you know, I wasn't looking at it and going, geez, this, you know, like, the, the one on ninth that we just saw, you know, that's sort of on the fringe of some things, and I definitely don't disagree if someone tries to make the argument that it is, or that it isn't, right, and then they can hash that out, right, like, I don't know if I have an opinion either way, this would change a spot in a solid color to a different color in a zone that we're trying to convince this residents that we will never do that, right, so I just wanna make sure I understand that that's what that looks like to me.
Any other comments, what we'd like to hear from the developer at this time? If the developer would like to be heard? And just, uh, state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Russell Opats with Valley Behavioral Health, councilmembers and mayor, thanks for having us, and thanks everyone for sticking around, I know it's a late night, and I'll try to go through this quickly, um, just a, a brief, uh, summary of Valley Behavioral Health, so we're a behavioral health provider in Salt Lake County, in Tooele County mainly, uh, provide services to around fourteen individuals and families every year, focusing on mental health care, substance use disorder treatment, uh, housing, stability, peer support, crisis management, med management, um, among other services, we've been developing affordable housing, um, targeting, uh, the populations we serve for, um, over forty years, um, mainly in Salt Lake County, but we also have a few hundred units up in Summit County, um, as well. And the site that we're talking about, Wendy already went over that, so we won't spend too much time on that, but here's, uh, just a little bit more detail on the two existing sites, so as, uh, Wendellin mentioned, uh, these, um, were, uh, I guess, that the president were, was prior to, I guess back when Midville was incorporated, right, so these were built prior to this existing SF1 zone, the one we're looking at now in red is called Ocker Ridge East, that is a HUD-funded property built in the nine, or in the late eighties, um, and that's twelve units of deeply affordable housing, um, and when I say affordable housing, I mean thirty percent of an individual's income, um, uh, not, uh, fair market rent, um, and this is Valley Phoenix, a, a treatment facility, um, for women and their children, which is very rare in our community, so women who, uh, seek out substance use, uh, treatment, can actually receive that with their children, um, uh, staying with them there, so there doesn't need to be that separation, um, and reunification portion of the treatment, which is very successful, um, this has been in operation since two thousand fifteen, um, so both of these are currently in operation, uh, at the existing site, this brown field is the site that we're proposing, um, building additional affordable housing on, and it's about one-point-seven-five acres of undeveloped land, um, as many of you know, it is, um, I mean, secluded is debatable, like most things, as Wendellin said, but it is secluded in terms of the surrounding area, there's quite a bit of, uh, setback, um, large, um, mature growth trees, uh, and then also surrounded, um, predominantly by Valley-owned existing sites, uh, we have our own access point there that you can also see, and which Wendellin showed in that map, that's that little, uh, panhandle that goes out to Seventh East, um, the proposals, uh, to, you know, to expand to RM twenty-five, and maybe just a couple key points here, uh, in the existing zone, we, we could build, um, around seven duplexes on that vacant land, fourteen, so seven structures, fourteen duplexes, so that would, you know, bring in forty to fifty bedrooms, if we're talking bedrooms, what we're proposing, the zone change, would be, um, in the forties, uh, unit count and bedroom sizes would, depending on the makeup, be around sixty, upper sixties, so about a twenty-unit difference between the existing zone and a new zone, uh, the existing zone allows for twenty-five, uh, feet, which would be about our two-story, twenty to twenty-five feet, which would be a two-story, single-family home or building, uh, the condominiums to the south have that, and are in similar density, um, we, if we had an RM twenty-five rezone, we would have the ability to build three stories, um, after talking with council members, community members, we heard loud and clear that three stories was not desired, um, don't wanna, uh, open it back up, but that's where the development agreement comes in again, right, I think that's an important thing that we would wanna hash out with you all in the community, is keeping it at two stories to match existing architecture and, uh, structures, um, so it would be at that two-story, uh, in this, um, in the renderings that you saw, um, and think Wendellin shared a little bit, this is kinda the design concept here, so it, parking would kind of be on the, um, the south and west, buffered between the, uh, neighboring lots and the existing, um, proposed structure. And I think Wendellin shared that, this is just a quick timeline, so this would be, um, affordable housing, um, so it would require a pretty substantial, um, lift in terms of capital financing and funding, um, so this is the first step in that process, so to seek any, um, financial support for a project of this affordability and deep affordability, we first would need a approved rezone to, uh, begin that process, um, if all were to go, um, on schedule, uh, more or less, we potentially could have a building, you know, late twenty-twenty-eight, um, so I think that's all I've got for now, any questions from the council?
Any questions for Russell?
Why not build the maximum amount right now?
Yeah, it's a great question, if there was, so when we talk about affordable housing and deeply affordable housing, there's really not any capital, um, sources that would fund that type of development, so the long-term housing tax credit program, federal and state, both would not support townhome-style, um, structures.
And, which I appreciate, but.
Yeah.
There's an affordable housing crisis all across the board, right?
Yep.
Like, the cheapest for-sale unit in Midvale is probably four-fifty or five-hundred, right?
Yep.
And we still have standards in these areas, even though we know that, because we think they are supposed to be protected a certain way, right? And so, I mean, I'm just trying to understand why, that, why we could tell a resident, well, yes, these other areas we will not say yes to, even though it would provide maybe more for-sale units that are, that could bring down the cost, because the supply goes up, you know, because those people, they, they're, they're not in the top one, two, or fifty percent, right, they're just trying to, they're teachers and, and.
Yep.
And whatever, and, and so like, we, we hold pretty strongly that generally, so like, how could we message that this, this is different, right? Because they, they would feel like we are also waiting in line to try to find a place to buy.
Yeah, no, that's a great question, and I think that one thing, you know, in your plan outlines this in terms of the other opportunity areas, right, and bringing more affordability, is that, um, oftentimes, I mean, a, for the units that we would target for this particular development, you could have a single mom teacher with three kids that, um, this is exactly who this property would be for, and, um, would not be able to afford a market-rate apartment, right? In terms of density, and in terms of, if you were to go the single-family route, um, the, there's very few empty lots in this area, right, like, this is one of few, and in terms of a project that would pencil and actually make profit as a developer, if you are in this for money, building a forty-eight unit property here would be less profitable than building fourteen single-family homes, the reason that Valley is pursuing this is because we know that, um, Utah and Salt Lake County in particular is in dire need of additional units, and additional deeply affordable housing units, and this is one mechanism, and there are tools, um, that we have that we can make this happen, uh, to serve those folks.
And I appreciate that, I, I think kinda missed the point, that I, I get calls every day from everyone saying this.
Yeah.
Right, it's not just, I, I think we just need to be empathetic that there's a lot of people that left Midvale, and when they do, they call me and they say, hey, like, those townhomes by me that are for rent, they're now like twenty-three, twenty-four hundred dollars for a townhome, for rent.
Yeah.
And they're like, we have to move, we're moving to Sandy because it's cheaper, which is like, not something I ever thought I would've heard, right?
And we, we wanna keep affor, I mean, we wanna make it affordable, right, and I, this is the, this is the only path that we see to.
To make it profitable for you, for that to be affordable, right?
To make it affordable.
Yeah, I don't know, I just, I appreciate that, I just think, sometimes there's like the middle class that just gets really left out of these conversations, right, because like, we'll, we'll go above and beyond for this group on both sides, and I, and I, I just don't see how I can respond to most of my residents that truly are feeling a, a very big pinch right now.
Yeah, I, I'm, I agree with you, and I, I think that's also a development agreement conversation, there's also incentives right now that have just been released in the last year, um, in terms of condos, and I think that that's a mechanism for homeownership, is condos, right? We have partners who specialize in first-time homebuyers, and you're right, four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, that's what a new affordable home is going to cost.
With an HRA, yeah.
With that model, and that, in my opinion, is leaving out the middle class, and this mechanism, with a rezone, with a condo model or something like that, I mean, there's, there's opportunity to, to help that middle class, and not to get too far in the weeds, my personal, uh, opinion on that is, uh, even new, a new build, single-family home there's not gonna serve the middle, uh, middle class.
But I guess my point was, even if you came in with a, that project, I would still be hesitant to rezone, right, like, it's not the project type, it's the, we, we've told people we're protecting these areas, I also recognize that there's this issue, so there's this balancing test, and I don't know if I have a good response, other than we've promised people we're gonna protect that.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and yeah, it comes down to density and, and what it's zoned for, and, and well, maybe one last thing, it, you know, we have met with many of you and, uh, community members, we met with the fire marshal, had them, had him out and, uh, locked the site, and, um, from a safety perspective, and easement, there's no concerns there, there's that substantial setback, so, um, yeah, I think, probably some comments, do you, any other comments from the council, questions?
Okay, thank you, Russell.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, so this is a public hearing, um, are there any other just general comments from the council first, otherwise I'll entertain a motion to open this to public comment.
Motion, will you open the public comment?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for that, all those in favor of opening this public hearing to public comment, say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are able to accept public comment, if anyone would like to comment on this item, please step up to the microphone, you'll be given three minutes, please state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Sue Armitage, and I live on the condo complex to the south of this flag lot, um, right now, we experience from the twelve-unit, and I believe he said eighteen-unit buildings, there, the, the two buildings, one was twelve and one was eighteen, I think, um, we experience, uh, visits from the fire department or ambulance about twice a week, um, we have people from that treatment center coming over into our complex, complex to sit around our fountain and our pond, and, um, I go walking in that area a lot, and I have seen people there hide their cigarettes in the landscaping bushes of neighbors along the streets, I guess they aren't probably maybe allowed to have cigarettes at their treatment complex, and I. maybe allowed to have cigarettes at the treatment complex. And I see them wrap their cigarettes in a plastic garbage bag and stick them in a, a bush of some neighbor. I'm not, not real happy with that. I understand the need for a treatment center. I understand the need for affordable housing. I believe this is ridiculously and radically dense for this area. The picture you saw, the diagram, you saw the overhead view, like a Google Maps view, that little area of the flag lot, it's not that big. Forty-eight units would be, would cram it full. I also want to bring to your attention, at the planning commission meeting last night, or last week, most of you were there. And if you remember, there was a presentation by MHTN about parks and open space in Midvale. And he noted that the northeast area of Midvale, in this very area, is, has a paucity of recreational outdoor space. Our only amenity is that canal. And I'm very concerned that a project of this size and duration would require cutting down of most, if not all, of the trees along the canal in that area. I don't see how you could bring in cranes and tractors and, and, you know, you might need to take down fencing and so on and so forth. I don't know how you could do that and preserve the big trees that create the only shade on that stretch of the canal. To me, this would be like, if you look in the mirror in the morning to shave or put on your makeup, you see a big pimple on the end of your nose. And that's what this would be to me and my neighbors. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your comments, Sue. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Please state your name for the record. You'll be given three minutes.
My name is Joe Fiala. Good evening, council members, mayor. I am a civil engineer. I work in development. So I work on a lot of projects similar to the previous and this one as well. I live in Countryside, immediately south of the property. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm here to express my opposition to the proposed rezone of the neighboring parcel from single-family to medium-high density. This request was already reviewed and denied by Planning Commission, and rightfully so. It does not meet the criteria required by Midvale Municipal Code seventeen-three-one-E. I'd like to briefly reiterate from the perspective of a neighbor. First, the rezoning is not consistent with the general plan, which clearly designates this area a single-family neighborhood. Allowing a pocket of higher-density development in the middle of a stable, single-family community undermines the integrity of that long-term vision and sets a troubling precedent. Second, there is no clerical error or mistake of fact regarding the current zoning. The developer knew the zoning limitations when they acquired the property. Attempting to change the rules after the fact does not qualify as justification under this criterion. Third, there have been no substantial changes to the land or its surrounding environment that would warrant such drastic shift in zoning. The area remains a cohesive, quiet residential neighborhood, and that's how residents want it to stay. And finally, the fourth criteria, the proposed rezoning does not serve the public interest as outlined in Utah Code ten-nine-A one-oh-two. In fact, it threatens to diminish neighborhood character, increase traffic, and erode that the trust residents have in city's long-term planning. This isn't about resisting growth. It's about doing it the right way in places where high density makes sense and aligns with community planning. Spot zoning in an established, single-family neighborhood does not meet that bar. I also want to be clear that I respect Valley Behavioral Health's mission to support recovery and care. But the reality is that this facility already brings regular ambulance and emergency response traffic, sometimes multiple times per week. Introducing high density can create legitimate concerns about noise, safety, and strain on public services. I urge you to listen to Planning Commission's recommendation to the residents who will be most affected by this change and to very, and to the very criteria you are bound to uphold. Please deny this zoning request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Joe. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? You know the drill. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Zach Tretter, and I live at Countryside in one of the units closest to this proposed developments. When I step, when I step, when I step out my front door, I see the lot. It's a nice green field. It's open. I love it. I can see the sky. I would love it to stay undeveloped, but it won't, and I can't. And I guess I'm not here to be against any develop, any development. I'm here to be against this rezone. This parcel is SF1. Everything around it is single-family. If you zoom out on that map, the nearest RM twenty-five high-density residential is half a mile away in Fort Union. There's nothing anywhere close by to this density. The own letter from, the, the letter from Valley Health says, all right, they can develop this as is. I didn't know until now that they can't get funding unless this is higher density. But that limitation is not Midvale's zoning to solve. This proposal is forty-eight units, and they said the site is one-point-eight acres. That's about thirty units per acre. For comparison, Countryside is ten units per acre. This would be massively more dense than anything that exists there right now. I looked on their website and it's slightly different from the numbers that Russell showed. But their website lists two-hundred units in Salt Lake City. And right now, this site has twelve or sixteen. This would be quintupling that to over sixty and be their largest facility in greater Salt Lake. And is this quiet neighborhood in Midvale the best place to have their largest facility for what they describe as people recovering from homelessness, mental health, and substance abuse? And again, low-income housing unfortunately can mean an increase in drugs, petty crime, and homelessness, which my neighbors already described as happening right now with what's there. So I would say that the rezone is not needed. It's not appropriate. And if the proposal was to just build more duplexes, I probably wouldn't have bothered to come because that's in keeping with the character of this neighborhood. But building forty-eight units in such a small area is spot zoning and is not appropriate. It doesn't make sense for this area. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to give public And please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name's Kylie Gillens, and I live near Sue in Countryside. I understand the need for this type of unit. I've got friends and stuff in this kind of facility. It's important. However, what's already there is already, we have cops and police and firefighters there all the time. It's already kind of a problem. There's yelling. There's random noises. You never know what's going on there. If you add high populations of low-income housing, on top of what's already there, I can't imagine those mothers on the property are going to feel safer. I also can't imagine that the people coming in there are going to have access to what they need there. Because as somebody who takes public transportation all the time, it's about fifteen minutes to a bus stop either way you go. The bus drivers don't always stop at those stops either. Then you have to transfer to the train to get one way or the other to where a center is, to get to another place, to get to a lot of the other facilities, like worker facilities and other facilities. So it's not exactly the best area for somebody recovering from homelessness to access the library and access all the other things they need to go, places they need to go. And that's not even to mention that in the winter, most of the sidewalks don't get shoveled on the way to the bus stop. So if there's any disability or accessibility problems, it can be problematic. So I don't really think this is a good place for this type of facility.
Thank you for your comments, Kylie. And I do want to recognize Senator Wayne Niederhauser, who has joined us tonight, State Homeless Coordinator. We appreciate you being here and offering the perspective you're about to give us.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Former Senator, now State Homelessness Coordinator, Office of Homeless Services. I'm not here to argue the merits or the, the technicalities of, of what's presented. This is purely a decision of this council. And, and first of all, we want to appreciate Midvale from, as the Office of Homeless Services for what we, what you do for homelessness with the, with the family shelter that is here. It's deeply appreciated, and we want to thank Midvale City for that. But I have to say that, you know, this is a product, product that is deeply needed in our state and in our communities deeply. You know, that, Kim Garner did a research, it's been about eighteen months ago, and they inventoried all the affordable housing in the state of Utah. And they matched up income levels. And this can be had, or I can send it to you if you'd like. But what we found out is that for deeply affordable housing, this is for a thirty percent area median income and below, the state has a seventy-seven-thousand-unit deficit. That means for every three households that have, that are in that income strata, for every hundred households that are in that income strata, there are three units. We are, we're in a deep hole in this state. And, and, and we appreciate communities stepping up, looking at this. It appears that this is a non-conforming use from the county, previous. Valley Medical Health brought this project. Yeah, there are some difficulties, but they do a great job in getting people back on a road to recovery and sustained recovery. And, and, you know, there are financing issues, and that's deeply affordable housing and nine percent tax credits. And so, but, you know, without some leeway, without some consideration, we're just not going to have these. And in 2023, we had ten thousand people in this state experience homelessness for the first time. And it's because we are now the ninth most expensive housing community in the country. We desperately need these units. And so I plead that you folks would at least consider, and, you know, maybe this is through a development agreement or whatever other process that you have. It's just deeply needed, and we support it. It's the Office of Homeless Services. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Any other public comments? Please state your name for the record.
Richard Shelley. I live on the corner of Enchanted Drive and Seventh East. Traffic, we all know. Seventh, Seventh East is probably worse than Ninth East certain times of the day. We've had multiple accidents. People hit wheelchairs. I know you all probably know that case. That was a resident of the property we're talking about. We have the issue of traffic. We have the issue of incidents within this complex of the facility, which is run by Behavioral Health. So we know it's a facility. It's an institution of some sort, a health institution. It's not housing, as we consider when we talk about other neighborhoods to rezone. It is a business. And it doesn't fit into the stable area as your engineer or planning engineer has spoke about. I believe we should go with his recommendations, that it does not fit into this area. There have been incidents which happened from the residents in the complex as it is now. Increasing those people, you know, under the treatment, I'm sure will increase the incidence. I won't have, I won't go into them. And there are police records. There are the fire department records. So the other thing I don't know, and I don't need an answer, but I always thought there was a new trail going in behind that property through the trail system that was coming out to Seventh East. So that may be the case, and that may change the view that people have on the other side of that canal towards this property. I don't know if any of them are here tonight, and I'm sure you've gotten comments from, through the emails and from the Planning Commission meeting that people spoke. They're all not here tonight. I know that. But, so I would hope that you would vote deny for this project at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Richard. Are there any other comments on this item? Please state your name for the record. You'll be given three minutes.
I'm not going to take three minutes, hopefully. My name is Heather Malovich. All of my neighbors have spoken exactly how we all feel on this. I do just have a few things to add. I don't think one of us is against low-income housing. I, and helping those in our community that absolutely deserve the help, I think that's a great thing to do. We are obviously against overpacking a flag lot. Another thing that no one has considered is the huge thing that Murray built on the old RC Willie lot. We have not felt the impacts of that traffic yet, and that is going to be huge. We already, it's impossible to make a left-hand turn out of our place in the mornings or in the evenings due to the overflow traffic that we get from Ninth to Seventh. So all of that traffic is absolutely going to impact us. But above and beyond traffic, it's not necessarily even about that. It's also about, they're saying, you know, all these barriers of these trees, it'll keep the privacy and whatnot. But those trees have not been maintained. We, where we live in Countryside, we have trees fall down all the time, and these aren't little trees. These trees took out the tennis court. They take out all kinds of things. And unless, and we, we did go through, I believe we worked with the city to have these trees. You guys helped us maintain just the trees that back our property, but nobody else has done the same. So until that's done, we're going to lose that green fence one day if nothing's done there. I don't have a ton more to say. I do think we need to do better. I think we need to build smarter. I think we need to plan better. I think we're all on the right foot and we're making the right steps. But we just need to oomph it up a little bit. I appreciate the time, and you guys all have a great night.
Thank you for the comments, Heather. I'm envious of your energy level at this point in the evening. So I appreciate that as well. Anyone else want to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close public comment.
Mayor, motion, will you close public comment?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of closing public comment, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, public comment is now closed. Are there any other questions or clarifying comments from the council on this item?
I have a few. Probably a surprise to a few people.
No one's surprised.
No one's surprised. There's just some general observations that I, I find very interesting. A lot of times when we get rezone requests, we get people coming, you know, residents coming in and, and they're like, oh, this is going to kill our property values and, and whatever. We never want low income. And, and I do say, I really appreciate all, I do think everyone has said, under the current zone, we would be absolutely okay with, you know, affordable housing, right? And I think that's a little bit of a change. A lot of times, you know, if it's affordable, if they hear the word affordable housing, no, never do it, right? So I really appreciate those comments, right? And, and a lot of times, we only get comments based on what's relevant, like close, right? And that makes sense. But interestingly, a lot of the comments we got in the emails, there were two-fers, like, hey, deny the set Ninth and the Seventh. So we have a lot, a lot of community engagement for properties that we normally don't get. So I appreciate it. You probably noticed on that one and this one, there's things I agree with, I don't agree with. But that's, I, the one thing I do agree with is having everyone coming in and telling me or writing me. Like, I really, really appreciate that. So, you know, I just thought these observations, and I really appreciate it.
Okay, there are motions for the council to consider on the board.
Mayor, moving on, we deny ordinance number 2025-O-09 authorizing a zone map amendment from a single-family residential duplex overlay zone SF1DO to the multi-family residential medium-to-high-density zone RM twenty-five for two properties located at six-eight-five-four South, seven-hundred East, and six-eight-five-two-
for two properties located at 6854 South, 700 East and 6852 South, 700 East, with the findings noted in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Rory, will you call the yeses and nos?
Yes, Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Mikulaj.
Yes.
Billings.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
And Robinson.
Aye.
Okay, that motion to deny passes unanimously. Before we move on to our next item, I do want to say thank you to Valley Behavioral Health for what you do for our community, not in just that location, but all over Salt Lake County and Utah. So thank you for that. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have one item to consider tonight. Consider the minutes of May 6, 2025. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Mayor, I motion, we accept consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. Rory, we call the yeas and nays.
Yes, Councilmember Mikulaj.
Yes.
Billings.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
And Brown.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously as well as it most often does. We have one discussion item. Let's just wait for everyone to go, just to make it a little longer for Brighton to wait. The most patient man in the room right now. Brighton will discuss adopting a drought contingency plan.
All right, well, I'm not as nervous now that everyone's left, so.
You want me to bring them back in?
No, it's okay. So I'm gonna go over the Midvale City Drought Response Action Plan. If you guys remember about a, probably six months ago, I brought the conservation plan to Midvale, or to you guys, and then we kind of went over that and then brought that to get passed. The picture that I pulled was from AI. I said, please make me a picture of Midvale City in a drought. And this is what I came up with, so now you guys know. Purpose of the drought response plan. Midvale City, as a wholesale customer of Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District, is required to adopt a drought response plan that aligns with Jordan Valley's regional efforts. This structured, multi-level plan outlines the city's response to varying drought conditions with each level specifying targeted water-saving actions based on supply, demand, and guidance from Jordan Valley. The goal is to reduce water use while minimizing impact on residents, businesses, and services. Jordan Valley wants this to get passed by all member agencies because we got the Weber Basin District up north, Jordan Valley Water District, and our messaging is varying. And there's state representatives that are driving up north, and they're seeing dead grass and green spaces, and then they drive down south. And we've got luscious green lawns, and it's because our messaging is different. So Jordan Valley is now wanting all member agencies to kind of adopt a similar messaging so that way we have something clear across the board between all cities surrounding. This is the drought action plan tool that Jordan Valley created, and then we kind of added in some of the things that they recommended, kind of outlined some of the projected savings. I'm gonna go over each level so that way we can kind of have a better understanding of the steps that we're going to take or potentially take if this passes. Level zero is gonna reflect normal water conditions, but Midvale City takes proactive steps to conserve water and prepare for future drought. Key actions include using smart meters to detect customer leaks and providing year-round conservation tips through the city drought dashboard. So that's something that we're currently already doing with our smart water meters. We have everything posted on the city website, talking about Jordan Valley's recommendations for water savings and stuff like that, so we're already doing that. Level one begins in early signs of drought while essential needs are still met. Midvale City encourages voluntary conservation and raises public awareness through media campaigns, promotion of water efficiency standards, and requests to limit non-essential uses like car washing. Level two is triggered when worsening drought conditions begin to affect Midvale City's ability to meet normal demands. The city increases education, coordination, and light enforcement, including water patrols, conservation workshops hosted by Jordan Valley, regular drought committee meetings, and limiting vehicle washing to certified car washes. Level three is enacted during severe drought conditions that significantly reduce Midvale City's water supply. Mandatory measures include strict lawn watering schedules, customized reduction agreements of large water users, and potential rate increases subject to city council approval. The drought committee will actively monitor conditions and adjust strategies as needed.
Who's the drought committee?
The drought committee will be all member agencies that are a part of Jordan Valley Conservancy District. So us, Sandy City, West Jordan, Kern's Improvement District. We all meet and have member agency meetings, and then that's how we assign a drought level, is we will all look at the projected snowpack levels and what the reservoirs are gonna be, and then we will assign a drought level depending on snowpack.
So is that like a vote, or what are we talking here?
It's, yes, it is a vote, so Midvale City will get a say in that. So what usually happens is annually, Jordan Valley will bring us their projections on snowfall and where the reservoirs are gonna be, and then the supply and demand that they're projecting based on the snowfall that they're gonna get. And then they will say, based on what we're projecting, on recent trends of water use and year after year kind of averages, we're thinking that we're gonna be in the green or we're gonna be, you know, using more water than what the snow's gonna provide. And then the member agencies will then assign a drought level. So that's where the zero through four kind of comes through. Currently, we're in a zero. That's what we voted on about a month ago. So that's kind of how that is decided. Level four, triggered during critical drought conditions when the city's water supply is severely limited. Strict conservation measures prioritize essential use and the survival of key vegetation. Residential and public lawns, including parks, schools, athletic fields, will be allowed to go dormant with minimal watering. A temporary rate increase or drought surcharge approved by city council may be implemented to further reduce usage. So this is kind of worst-case scenario. This is all new. Jordan Valley brought this to our attention a month ago, and they said, we want everyone to get this passed. We don't know if we're ever going to hit a level four or if we're ever gonna hit above a level two, but this is just something that we want to have in place so that way, if we do get to that point, that we have some sort of guideline and consistent messaging across the board. Closing statement. Midvale City Drought Response Plan is designed to protect our water resource and ensure sustainable supply for the future. By outlining clear actions for each level of drought, we aim to minimize the impact on residents, businesses, and essential services while promoting water conservation. Collaboration with the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District and other partners is essential to managing drought conditions efficiently. And then questions?
Any questions for Brighton?
Just quick, do you know what level we are?
Right now, we're at a zero. So they're, Jordan Valley and all the members, certain member agencies, looked at the current snowpack and what they're projecting the reservoirs are gonna be, and it looks like we're gonna be in high eighties, nineties areas. So we voted on a zero for this year.
So when you say we, who actually voted?
It's, so they just approached.
From us?
From us. It was Wes, the water manager, myself, Glenn, Jeremy. We were all, and Keith Ludwig, he was also there. We were all representatives of Midvale City. And then we presented all that information, and then they all went through and said, Jordan Valley's recommending that we're a zero. If anyone has any ideas or questions or differing opinion, then please let us know. So. But fifty percent of the water that Midvale City gets is purchased through Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District. So fifty percent is supplied from our wells. So we want to make sure that Jordan Valley's in our good graces.
I just wanted to know how it really works.
For sure, for sure. So if, did you have a question?
Yeah, so it was two or three years ago, we had a pretty bad summer, and, you know, everyone was putting out guidance. And I felt like a lot of our neighbor, like the residential component and the city, you know, the areas of grass that people used frequently did everything they could to sort of try to be like, hey, we're team players.
Yeah.
And then you would drive down Center Street, and there was that Zion's Bank that just closed, sprinkling their lawn, you know, three times a day when it's a hundred and two. And the only people that ever touched that grass are the people that mow the grass, right?
Yep.
And so I agree with these, I appreciate them. I do think there's a disproportionate outcome on this. And it needs to go back to them that the first people that need to kind of get a tough watering schedule are commercial grass.
For sure.
Because those don't need to be grass, right? Like, they look nice, and I don't want to tell them that normally. But it's hard when you have a, you know, a house with four or five kids and a dog, and they're like, yeah, just kind of don't really want them out playing in this yard because it's now dead, and then we have the youth football trying to play on the park. That's in pretty bad shape. And then you see a Zion's Bank. I feel like, yeah, it doesn't really sit well with me, right? Like, a lot of people laugh going, we're not gonna follow this anymore.
Yeah.
Because if Zion's Bank doesn't have to, I don't have to. And I use my grass, and I'm like, gee, that's kind of compelling.
Yeah, and I mean, that is, the worst-case scenario is to tell residents, hey, I want your lawn to die, or we want your lawn to go dormant and stuff. And that's why I think it was level two or, one of the levels, we have a section where we go over how there's going to be enforcement or water patrols where, and pretty much what that would be is if a city employee or one of you is driving around and you see Zion's Bank in the middle of the day with their irrigation running, and it's going down the storm drain, and there's nobody around to let me know or let someone else know at Public Works, and then we can, you know, contact Zion's Bank and say, hey, it's middle of the day. Your guys' sprinklers have been on all day long. Let's shut them off. There's no need for you to do that. So doing patrols like that, not necessarily targeting residents, but just, you know, not best management practices for watering your lawn, so. But I'm with you on that. I don't want to make anyone kill their own residential grass, so.
Real quick question.
Yeah.
I think about two weeks ago, the governor declared drought emergencies in, I don't know, half of our counties. I mean, we weren't one of them. But how would, so if we were one of them, obviously, we wouldn't be at a level zero. But is there planning as far as like, when more than half of the state is under drought emergency declaration from the governor that like, yeah, we might be okay here in Salt Lake County, but it might also be best practice to always kind of live at a level one?
Yeah.
I feel like that's how I do. And we're not in a drought emergency here. So I don't know if that's, the governor's declaration has any, obviously, it would if he declared Salt Lake County in the drought emergency. But is there any of that sort of like, long-term kind of planning amongst?
I know Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District has been trying to push across-the-board communication to all the conservancy districts throughout the state. So that way, it's not just us and the Weber Basin area or, I can't think of the Water Conservancy District down in like Eagle Mountain area. But, you know, we want to make sure that we're not just talking with our close neighbors, but the whole state, and then kind of coming up with a generalized statement for everyone. This is the first year that this is going on, so I imagine that there's probably gonna be revisions, and there's gonna be new things that they're gonna want to implement or steps or things like that. So this is kind of the first step, having consistent messaging, and then we'll kind of go from there year after year.
I think too, we adopted another set of Jordan Valley recommendations for drought guidelines. I forget exactly what we call those.
Water efficiency standards.
Water efficiency standards, a number of months ago. And then I think this is sort of an additional layer on what it's gonna provide guidance on. I think, I could be wrong, we haven't talked about this, but I mean, I think there is this, by approving these, these sets of minimums. But if we wanted to go and have policies that go beyond this, I mean, that's something we could look at doing too. But I think this is saying, really, these are, they're recommended, what we would do in those situations. And so I think we could go beyond that if we wanted to. Probably just if you adopt them, we couldn't go, shouldn't go less. Do you remember, gosh, I think it was twenty-one, Brian, or Councilmember Brown, was the big drought. Was it twenty-one?
Yeah, it was, it was not last year, the year before.
Do you remember what level we hit on the drought?
So that, that whole drought that we experienced is what kind of set this whole plan into motion, is because Salt Lake County was technically a zero. There wasn't a level ranking system like there is now, but they were technically a zero, and all the neighboring counties were, you know, pushing, kill your grass, don't water, we need to save water, and then we had.
I mean, the governor said like, trees and shrubs only.
Yeah, and so communication was not there because then representatives would drive up north, and they'd see everything is dead. They'd drive down south, everything's dead. They'd drive in Salt Lake, and everything's luscious and green.
Yeah, sorry, I, man, I swore we, there was, like, we were a one, or I thought that was the.
There could have been a level that the governor implemented or kind of assigned, but this is the first year that Jordan Valley has implemented something of this nature, so.
I would say, I love that you guys are thinking ahead on all of this in the planning. Councilmember Brown just brought up a really good point that we have a lot of HOA in communities here, and I would love to have like a contingency plan for them. Because I know when we hit that drought in our community, we actually went to the Jordan Valley Conservatory and got a grant to waters, you know, dry-scape a lot of our areas to help with it. So I think making sure that we're looking at not only single-family commercial, but like these communities that we're bringing in to help support the community.
And that kind of goes back on the efficiency standards that we adopted. Now that we've adopted those efficiency standards, residents and HOA and businesses can receive funding and for zero-scaping or drip systems and stuff like that. So it's just another, this is just another step to help.
Yeah, I think the more messaging we can do around that, the better.
And Matt, I'd like, you know, I hear your point that we can always then dictate. My personal opinion is, from the city side, you know, if we have to cut water for a lot of things, I would just really always like to keep the park, our main big park. We have to lose Adams Park for a little bit or something, but the plan that we have there, the plan that we have there is, you know, gonna be very important, a lot of people. So if that means cut water in a lot of places to save the park for use, like especially with the amphitheater, I'd like that sort of as a contingent thought.
And in the Adams Park, the dogs water the lawn for us?
Yeah, that's true. There's this secondary.
Very kind of them. I think the request is to put this on the consent agenda for our next meeting.
Yeah, so if there's, if there's no other questions or anything, then I would propose that we put this on the consent agenda for next meeting.
I'd go with that.
Okay, I think everyone has given a thumbs up.
Okay.
Thank you, Brighton.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we have three closed session, no, I'm joking. We don't have any closed session items tonight, so moving on to the motion to adjourn. Motion and a second. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor say, no, there were none. We are adjourned.